Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today, we have the inimitable Bishop Alexander from Church Without Walls to give our invocation. And Mr. Wright, I believe you're giving the pledge allegiance. Awesome, so if you're willing and able to stand, we'd love to have you join us.
Thank you. Let's go before the Lord. Heavenly Father, we just come before you and thanking you for the opportunity to be living and being in this wonderful place called Citrus County, this courthouse. We thank you so much for these commissioners, God, that you've given us to govern over all the affairs of Citrus County. We ask a special blessing for Ruthie, Lord, that you heal her and touch her body. And we're just grateful for all those that are here and came today. Our Lord bless us with the blessing we stand in need of. Thank you for Citrus County schools that's beginning to open. We pray for those kids and teachers and staff, Lord, for safe year. Thank you for all the first respondents. Thank you for all those that are gathered, Lord, to lift you up. We say a simple prayer that you taught your disciples, and we all can say this together. Our Father, in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Hallelujah, the kingdom, power and glory forever. Amen. Thank you.
Chief Wright?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this eighth day of August 2023. In attendance are First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you. The, Mr. Howard, the agenda, we have some extra and corrections?
Yes, that is correct. First is additional information for B3. There's a correction on G1, and that's just for the cost of the sworn officers. There's also additional information for T2, which is an updated PowerPoint. It's labeled as 2.2.0A. Also, additional slide for T2, which is labeled as T2B, and also T2C. And that's all the addition.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Madam Chair, motion approved, the agenda with changes?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any board?
Are we pulling B3? Mr. Howard?
If it's for your consideration, we're doing, are you doing on consent?
I was going to suggest that we pull it for separate consideration on the consent agenda. So, any board discussion?
I'm sorry, what are you pulling?
Not, we're not pulling anything right now. Any board discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, board, on the consent agenda, my preference would be for someone to make a motion to pull B3 for separate consideration, but otherwise, you can take it as a whole.
Pull B3.
Okay, I need a whole motion to approve the others, though.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of B3 for discussion.
I'll second.
All right. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, we had this on our last agenda, and frankly, not much has changed. And I am just going to go ahead and make a motion to deny this at this time because I believe that, number one, this is still piecemealing. We have no master plan. It's the typical hodgepodge of development. We know that they've came in and said there's going to be a car wash on Lot 2. They've made suggestions on what would be on the rest of it. I have no idea what the total access management plan is. I am definitely not for one to have driveways, independent driveways, coming in and out. And we, at this point, if we approve this, we don't know what that looks like. So, my motion is to deny this.
I'll second it for, but I do want to ask the Madam Attorney. Does, it can, this doesn't kill it forever. They can come back with a proper plan, yes.
What, what your, what this request is, is just strictly relating to the plat, not the use. So, yes, they can come back at another time to rearrange things or to do something different with the plat.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
So, just as the attorney said, I would be willing to move forward with this because we're not making any decisions on land use. It's one large piece of property. We're carving it into two pieces of property right now. We're doing nothing further than that at this time, and I want to move ahead and do it.
Mr. Kennard?
I would concur. I think this is, we're not, we're not approving all of this. We're simply carving out one section off of a much larger piece. And I think we're reading, last meeting, some, let me back up a minute. Something did change, for sure, because last meeting, the understanding that, that most of us had was that we were dealing with a much larger piece than actually what we were dealing with. They have tried to, the additional information we got, they tried to clarify exactly what's going on here. And at this point, all they're doing is carving that one piece out. So, I don't see any reason to not move forward with this. I think Commissioner Bays makes some valid points. We don't, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where you've got all of these driveways going right out on, onto 491, and that will be approved at another time when they bring this, this full plan forward.
My understanding, though, is that if we plat it, we don't necessarily get another shot at approving what goes in there and how it's done. And personally, my opinion is, is that that is where we are focusing the big, the big box and the, the big retail section in the center of the county, and we have one chance to get it right. So, I'm not saying, you know, I'm not against what they, some of what they want to put in there. I just want to make sure that it gets done to benefit the county in a long-range plan. So, I look forward to seeing this again when they have a little bit more fleshed out. So, I need to open it to public comment at some point, yes.
I just want to, I don't think that that's the case. And to Commissioner Bays' point, we can address all of those things, like access, when they come back. I think they just put that in the, showing us what a plan could be, not what it will absolutely be. So, right now, we are just carving out that one section for what they're approved for. So, that's going there no matter what. We're just able, we're, we'll be able to come back to the table for the rest of that piece of property if we approve this today. And that's what we're looking to do. We, we want to have that chance to, to address all those issues and to decide what we want. But it looks like today, we need to approve it so it could just be split into two pieces of property.
You and I have two different understandings of the issue. So, not, you're not going to change my mind on that. But would anyone from the public like to address this on this matter? Got your green card already filled out? Good job.
Got it. Who do I give it to?
And Clerk, and you get three minutes, and please state your name for the record, and it should hopefully turn yellow when you've got a minute left.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brandon Hebron. I work with the developer OLS partners. We've been working on this project since August of 2022. We originally purchased the property, and there was a Culvers on the site, so immediately we dove into it to try and figure out, okay, how do we utilize the rest of this property in a efficient manner? We've done a lot of research on it. Title wave was already ready to go. So, we've got a building permit conditionally upon the plat, the approval of the plat. That's the last thing we need for the, the building permit. So, that's what we're here today, is really asking for the plat, for the title wave to be approved. As you can see from the additional information, there are two access points to the, to the project. One is from West Parkville, one is from 491. That, that access point is actually, is going to be constructed as part of the 491 Improvements Project. So, those are the two access points that we have. We have already submitted a plat for the remainder. I think it was in June that we submitted a plat for parcels 3, 5, 6, and 7. 7 being the, the supposed storage facility, which is in the backside of the property. So, again, I don't see yellow yet, but I think I've kind of gone as far as I can. You know, I'm obviously here to answer any questions. We, we want to be open and communicate with you guys. So, we would appreciate you to reconsider just the plat for PLT 2231 for the title wave, and thank you for your time.
I feel very confident that we'll get this figured out shortly. Maybe not today. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Okay, I'll close, open to the public to follow up. We are certainly open for business in Citrus County. However, we are getting growth coming at us so quickly, we just need to tap the brakes every once in a while to make sure that we do it right. And we want to work with you, at least me personally, I can only speak for myself. I'm just not comfortable with it today. But soon, you can work with staff, and I'm sure we'll get there.
Commissioners, would anybody like to say anything further?
I would like to know from our attorney, it looks like, and I'm not quite sure why, it's not going to be approved, like what would happen in the future? Like, what are the options for the future?
That's kind of, it's, that's kind of broad. If you mean what happens with this plat, at this point, the motion that's on the floor is to deny the plat. So, depending on how that vote goes, I don't know whether the plat will be denied or whether the motion will fail and whether there'll maybe be another motion. I'm not quite sure about that. But as far as the plat's concerned, they are simply asking for the parcels to be separated. They're not at all discussing uses because the title wave, that's by right, they get to put that there. The sticking point that they have is its contingent upon the replat. So, if you all either deny the plat or don't vote on the plat, then they can't do anything yet. Somebody's going to have to come back and do something different.
I'm actually going to rescind my second because I believe we should table this instead.
Are you looking, are you asking me to, are you just telling me?
No, I'm just.
Saying that?
Yeah, I, I would, yeah. So, I'm going to rescind my second, and Commissioner Bays, would you like to change the motion?
Well, no, I would like to know if, I mean, I'm okay if you want to bring me back a full picture. What I don't want to vote on is, I don't like uncertainty. I want to know exactly what we're voting on. I know that this is a plat division, but a plat division, by rights, they already have title wave, which they can move forward with.
I, I don't, I don't agree that they can move forward with it because the lot is, they have to have the plat. As the gentleman said, his building permit is contingent upon them getting the plat revised.
What, what we do, if we divide this and you give this two and then three, that leaves three. They can come back and do things that they want to do with three, and we don't really know what that is at this point. They've given, they've made suggestions, but we have no certainty of that. I'm just, you know, what, what is the, if we don't approve this today, which my motion is, and they want to bring this back and bring us an overlay of the entire project, that's still possible, correct?
First of all, if you've rescinded your second, there is no motion on the floor. We, we have to deal with that procedure.
I would like to make a motion that we table it.
Okay, so, so first, you, you would declare that Commissioner Bays' motion dies for a lack of a second?
Mm-hmm. Dies for lack of a second, I make a motion that we table it. Mr. Bays?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further board discussion?
Did you want me to answer? Okay. So, at this point, the development on the remainder of the lot, because it is just one lot, they're seeking to do two different things. So, what the development on the remainder of the lot is not by right. So, they have to go forward with their planned development, and that's what is before the PDC, but was pulled at the last, at not, the PDC meeting before last. So, the only thing that could potentially be done without further action of the PDC and this board is the title wave car wash, but that can't be done because the lot, it's one parcel right now. It's not two parcels or six, seven parcels. It's only one. So, the only thing they could do is put the title wave, but they don't want to do that because that would be wasting the rest of their parcel. So, nobody can do anything until it comes back to the PDC and this board if you don't approve the plat.
Commissioner Kennard?
So, if we do approve this plat today, they can move forward putting the car wash there. The, the remainder of the property, the, the stuff that they want to do there, that will have to go back through the PDC and then come to us?
Yes.
Okay. So, we will get a bite at that apple to determine whether or not we like what they've decided they're going to do with that remaining piece of property?
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Bays?
So, is Eric, I, I mean, what's the downs, so then?
You can bring staff up.
As he's coming forward, if I've said anything wrong, please correct me because I think I did it right.
Hello, Eric Growth Management.
Can you please address this, then? I mean, if, if, again, my concern is, I don't like approving something. I, if, if this has been out there since '22, as a good community partner, you have every opportunity to bring it forward and tell us what you're doing. And at the last minute, we receive various things, it's going to be done with the remaining parcel of Lot 3. I feel as an obligation as somebody that's been elected to be a steward of the citizens of Citrus County, that we have property in our community that we should be looking out for the highest and best use and the best development standards possible. And I'm very concerned when you have somebody that owns property that is not from this community, that they bring things in on a hope and a prayer that we're going to approve it, and then it becomes something that we go, oops, we didn't realize that was going to happen. That's my fear and my concern. When you put, when you bring something to me last minute and you say, oh, well, you can have X, Y, and Z on here, but there's nothing definitive about it. If you've had it since '22, why can't, why didn't, why was that not done? And what, what box are we putting ourselves in by approving this today?
If you approve it as is, then you're creating Lots 2 and 3 as shown on the plat. And then Lot 2 will proceed forward with the car wash because they can do that by right. Lot 3, it's unknown at this time because there's a pending case before the PDC for the mini storage. And then how the remainder of Lot 3 would be further divided, can't speak to that. I know that the property owner, the applicant, has their ideas. If, if I'm reading what you're saying correctly, and you, and your desire is for properly planned development, then a planned development would be, a pud would be an avenue you could take, where you take the entire property, you determine what the lot sizes are, the setbacks, the access, the signage. All that can be negotiated with the property owner in the planned development. If you wanted to go that route, that would be an option.
I'm, I'm sorry, if, if I can add to, and Eric might have forgot, I actually forgot. They are actually asking for a conditional use on the remainder, remainder on, for the storage facility. So, that won't come back before you. I apologize, I did say that incorrectly. So, if it's a conditional use, it goes to the PDC but does not come to you.
Okay. Commissioner Finnegan was next, and then you.
My question was answered.
Okay. Commissioner Bays?
So, this speaks to my very point, then, because I do want to have say-so over aesthetics, setbacks, signage. I think that is highly important, especially this boulevard that we're creating through We don't, I, I just, again, I'm going to say it's, it's hodgepodge, and I really want to know access management points. I'd like to know signage. I'd like to know the aesthetics, and I am just, I just do not feel comfortable approving this one piece at a time.
If, if the applicant were to come forward with a planned development, then all those items could be negotiated by the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Kennard?
When they go to the PDC, they'll be required to meet all the county code, correct? As it's currently written, even though it's a conditional use?
Only as to the rear portion. That's all, in the application that's pending, unless it's changed, and I don't know that. But if, what went before, that what was going to go before the PDC before was just the storage facility, it wasn't the out parcels on the front.
Okay.
So, as long as they comply with the code as to the storage facility, I don't know what they're going to do up in the front, but as long as they comply down, you know, with the storage facility, then yes. It, it could be approved, you know, by the PDC, but you're not going to know what's going on in the front. These other pictures that came in as additional, that's the only question that, you know, Lot 3, 4, 5, and 6. So, they, you know, they could make it all one planned development. They could do Lot 7, 6, 5, 4, and 3, and then you would have control over everything. Or they could leave the conditional use on 7.
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Bays 100% in terms of not only traffic flow management, access points, signage, aesthetics, 100%.
Landscaping goes along, I did not mention that.
Landscaping, yes. Everything that we just went through with, is it Amber Ridge?
Correct.
Where Target's going, yes. So, needs to be pretty.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Have they changed the conditional use application? I, I don't know.
It's still proceeding next week, as, as I'm aware.
Oh, okay. Care to make one final point?
I feel extremely passionate and strong about this, and I'm going to lay it out for the people that are watching on TV and the audience. When we develop roads like 491, it costs a lot of money to put the roadways in, to put the utilities in, to have all of this expansion. And, and much of that comes, I mean, we, we have to charge for that for, as our taxpayers. And we have an obligation to them as we move forward in this community to know exactly what that's going to look like. We don't, we've been this community for a long time where we just approve things on the fly, and that's why we see other communities to the south of us that have ended up with what they've got, and we say all the time, we don't want to be them. If we approve this, this is being them. And that's not what I want to be. And it, the way I look at it, one-third of our property is never going to be developable. We claim that we're an environmentally sensitive community, and we have our lakes and our rivers, which takes another portion of our community that's not developed. And what we do have should be precious, and we should demand the very best. And that's what I'm going to say about it.
Ditto. Any further comments? Motion on the floor is to table B3. And since it's a different motion, I need to open it up to the public again. So, any public comment on B3 table? Seeing none, closed public comment. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So, that's four ayes, yes?
No. Two and aye opposed.
You said aye, and I thought you would say nay. My apologies. Okay, so it was, what did you vote? Aye?
Aye, I mean, that's the way it's going.
Okay, so 3-1.
Okay.
All right. Six minutes until our time's certain. Board, anybody want to make a motion on proclamation?
Motion to approve Items C1 and C2.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And any public comment? Board comment? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Will the individuals representing the Nature Coast Community Band 15th Season of Performances please come forward? Whereas music is a vital part of our lives, and music performance and appreciation are important to our social, cultural, historical, and educational development, and whereas Nature Coast Community Band is entering its 15th season of providing free concerts to the citizens of Citrus County and beyond, Nature Coast is an all-volunteer band comprised of retired professionals, retired military members, audition students, active band directors, and well-qualified musicians. And whereas Nature Coast Community Band takes pride in representing Citrus County and its citizens at events, contributing to the quality of life in Citrus County, the NCCB honors its veterans during Veterans Week, Massing of the Colors, and Purple Heart Ceremony, and whereas NCCB has been nominated for Guide to Florida, which will increase the enhanced tourism, real estate, retirement, and family living, NCCB is involved in community outreach projects and civic connections. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby encourage our citizens and visitors to attend the Nature Coast Community Band's free concerts, and understands the impact of the band in cultural life to our county. They do hereby recognize 2023-2024 as Nature Coast Community Band's 15th Season of Performances in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 8th day of August 2023. Would those individuals representing Breastfeeding Support Month please come forward? Whereas infant nutrition is considered a public health issue and critically important during natural and health emergencies, the nutrients exclusive to human milk cannot be manufactured. Breastfeeding promotes overall health and, health, growth, and development, and helps to prevent infections as well as asthma, obesity, diabetes, and other chronic illnesses in adulthood. And whereas breastfeeding benefits a mother's postpartum recovery and decreases the risk of ovarian and uterine cancers, diabetes, and heart disease. And whereas breastfeeding is recognized by the Florida Department of Health, Florida Breastfeeding Coalition, Tampa Bay, and Florida West Coast Breastfeeding Task Force, and major medical organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, the National WIC Association, the Office of Women's Health, World Health Organization, among others, as the healthiest method of infant feeding. The Surgeon General's Call to Action to Support Breastfeeding highlights that if 90% of U.S. babies were breastfed exclusively for six months, the nation would save an estimated $13 billion per year in healthcare costs. And whereas World Breastfeeding Week is recognized during the first week of August and is a global initiative to raise awareness of the benefits of breastfeeding and its important long-term effects on the growth and development of infants, with the 2023 theme being enabling breastfeeding, making a difference for working parents. And Black Breastfeeding Week is recognized during the last week of August, focusing on the racial disparity in breastfeeding rates and the unique cultural barriers among black women, which is linked to high black infant mortality rates. Black Breastfeeding Week also aims to promote diversity in the lactation field and reduce first-food deserts in black communities. Whereas Florida law permits mothers to breastfeed in any location, public or private, irrespective of whether the mother's breasts are covered during breastfeeding, and the state, in states the act of breastfeeding shall not be considered public indecency. Parents and children are valued members- Parents and children are valued members of the US labor force. Accommodations for breastfeeding at work protected under the law benefit not only women and children, but employers as there are cost savings in terms of healthcare due to less illness, higher morale, and a stronger sense of loyalty among lactating employees. Whereas Florida Breastfeeding Coalition, Florida West Coast Breastfeeding Task Forces recognizes that it is vital for families to make informed choices about the health of their infants and supports increased efforts by hospital staff, providers, employers, and all Floridians to not only encourage, but to provide tangible support for breastfeeding. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of August, twenty twenty-three as Breastfeeding Support Month in Citrus County, Florida, and encourage all citizens to join in this worthy observance. Executed this eighth day of August, twenty twenty-three.
All right, excellent timing for our time certens. First one, we have a one thirty presentation from Andy Chan, Business Plan for Right Rudder Aviation.
Okay, well, I see. Okay, yeah, I got it, yep. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, my name is Andy Chan. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Right Rudder Aviation. As you know, we operate the Inverness Airport on behalf of the county. And our goal are at Right Rudder Aviation is to make the dream of flight accessible to all. And so that's on the title side and the ending slide because that is our primary mission and focus at Right Rudder Aviation. Before you, you can see a slide that shows the airport. We have approximately three hundred and fifty acres at the Inverness Airport. It's a really prime location as far as airports go for a number of reasons. Florida is the flight training capital of the world, as you may or may not be aware. Inverness is, of course, the geographical center of the state of Florida. So that makes it quite convenient for flight training to access various parts of flight, various airports throughout the state. And we're also in a unique area that statistically is less likely to be hit by hurricanes. And we have an elevation of sixty-five feet at the Inverness Airport. So we're very resilient from a storm perspective. So a lot of appealing factors to the Inverness Airport, including, of course, many of you or maybe all of you were at the groundbreaking ceremony for the business park, which is a new and exciting chapter at the Inverness Airport. Next picture, of course, you can see the facility that the county built and what is attract, what attracted Right Rudder Aviation to the Inverness Airport. Wonderful fifteen thousand square foot facility, two fuel tanks, two twelve thousand gallon fuel tanks to include Jet A and one hundred low loaded. And you can see a picture of some of the aircraft that we own, operate, and maintain. So who is Right Rudder Aviation? So we were founded in two thousand sixteen by two University of Central Florida graduates, so we are locals. And our mission is to make the dream of flight accessible to all. And you'll see in a little bit how we continue, how we've done that in the past and how we continue to offer things that other flight schools are unable to do. Our our big hairy audacious goal is to become one of Citrus County's largest employers. And we're well on our way to that path. Our current agreement, as it's outlined, in front of you, you can see a number of required services that are outlined in our contract. I'll touch on on on, we do commercial aircraft refueling, aircraft storage, aircraft apron services, maintenance and repair servicing of aircraft. Management of the airport on behalf of the county, including the fuel farm. We are open to the public for pilots and passengers. We provide emergency services to disabled aircraft. We are a part sixty-one and one forty-one flight school, meaning we are an FAA approved flight school. And we provide aircraft, I'm sorry, airplane, glider, and helicopter instruction. We are currently working to get our service visa program in place that was delayed a little bit because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we also interact at the county level with TSA on a regular basis. We provide aircraft rentals and of course have a number of appropriately trained personnel, approximately twenty-five people on our team. And of course, we have appropriate equipment. We are open seven days a week. So pretty much as you're going through this list, this is the required services that is in our lease with the county. And we, you can see that we check every single box and and then more. So the next slide, above and beyond, this discusses all of the things that are not required in our lease that we do above and beyond as what is required. So the first one, we're significantly proud of this one. We're the leader in revolutionary low cost flight training. Literally, we are the lowest cost place to earn a pilot certificate in the world. Because of that, we attract hundreds of visitors per year to our facility to learn how to fly. And that's been a huge success. We're also a leader of an electric, in electric aviation. The first person to earn a pilot certificate in an electric airplane in the world did so right at the Inverness Airport at our facility in one of our electric aircraft. We're a leader in aircraft sales. Last year in twenty twenty-two, we sold more aircraft than any other independent distributor in the world. And that is a, that's a task that was very difficult to accomplish, I must say. We started a revolutionary pilot development program with, in conjunction with Mesa Airlines, brought Mesa Airlines to the state of Florida. And there's currently approximately fifty cadets at our facility flying at this point in time, ten aircraft, soon to be seventeen aircraft in the time building program. Those cadets are regularly out in the community, you know, spending their dollars and contributing to our tax base. We are, of course, kicked off FAA mechanics program in conjunction with the Keweenaw Technical College and of course, the county in order to create a pathway for individuals to have a tie into a six figure job here in the county. And we're big supporters of the community, including the Citrus County Blessings, Boys and Girls Club, and the Boy Scouts of America. One thing we're getting into, and one of the reasons we were really excited about the Inverness Airport is because of the business park. And so we've now accelerated our pathway to aircraft design, development, certification, and production. We're working with several partners on that. But the business park will enable us to expand our our location such that we can bring manufacturing to the Inverness Airport. We've successfully recruited emergency service providers, including Airlife, which provides aeromedical services not only to this county, but the surrounding counties. And they've saved hundreds of lives since we recruited them to the airport. We've also recruited a hurricane response aircraft. Some of you have seen that on the field there. And so again, because of the great location of Inverness, we're able to recruit providers such as that. We recently became a contract maintenance provider for Florida Fish and Wildlife and Florida Highway Patrols, who are regularly servicing and maintaining their aircraft, brought them to to the Inverness Airport. And we're looking to, for them to establish a base in the next couple of years at the Inverness Airport potentially. We are Hertz Rental Car Location, where none of, none of others in the county exist. And we're putting Citrus County on the national aviation map. As an example, you can see the cover of Flying Magazine there. Can't see my face quite in that picture, but that's actually me flying that airplane there. We made four magazine covers over the last couple of years, national magazine covers. We also have been assisting in site selection and grant writing services along the way. Quick slide here, next slide, please, is just, you can see that the services that Right Rudder Aviation provides to the county and to the tax base goes well above and beyond what is required. And you can see down there, we have some pretty viral YouTube videos. This one discusses how you can earn your pilot certificates in ten hours or less. Again, a huge success in that low cost. The next couple of slides go over what's called, you know, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity Aviation Economic Impact Study. And you can see, I won't go into the details, but this is the basis of which they form their calculations on the financial impact that the airports have throughout the state. So if you go to the next slide, you can see the two thousand nineteen study was conducted with two thousand seventeen data. And at that time, this was pre our arrival. We arrived and and our lease began in two thousand eighteen. So before Right Rudder came to the Inverness Airport, there were approximately eighty-three jobs with three point four million. And this is not directly at the airport, but it includes the waterfall effect. Again, that's what the previous slide goes over. Four million in value added and a total of nine point seven million in economic output that the airport provided before our arrival. If you go to the next slide, you can see the twenty twenty-two data from the same study, again, provided by the Florida Department of Transportation. And you can see that through the waterfall effect, the airport contributes five hundred and forty-three jobs, twenty-three point six million in payroll, and economic output of sixty-eight point eight million, again, through the waterfall effect. And so the next slide goes over the differences between the two thousand seventeen and the two thousand twenty-two study of four hundred and sixty jobs added in that time and approximately fifty-nine point one million added. One of the big differences is that, of course, we were, you know, attended at Right Rudder Aviation and operating the Inverness Airport on your, on on the county's behalf. So the next and final slide is just the the tail end of it is again, our motto is to make the dream of flight accessible to all. Now, we wanted to take this opportunity to give you an overview of who we are, what we do at the Inverness Airport because we're ready to make another significant investment in the county. As you know, over the last five years, or you may or may not know, there has been a significant need of hangar space at the Inverness Airport, many, many projects focusing on that. It is difficult to get capital to invest in hangars because once a builder builds a hangar, it becomes county of the property. So traditional mortgages don't apply in this scenario. That being said, Right Rudder Aviation is ready to make up to a five million dollar investment to build between a ten and twenty thousand square foot facility directly to the south of our current existing facility. So we'd like to amend the lease to include that space based on that investment and for a longer duration of time to allow us to recoup that investment over time. And that's pretty much the presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to field them.
No question. I do. You said that you were wanting additional time. How much additional time are you wanting?
So we're, we're requesting a fifty year lease at this point in time to recoup the five million dollar investment.
Is that fifty years for the hangar or for the FBO?
So the capital that we have is contingent upon both. So it's, we have gone and got private equity investment. The, so it's tied in together because the ability to operate that building depends on our ability to be an FBO from a commercial perspective. So both essentially would be tied up into one lease. And historically, that's in the past, our lease has been modified two or three times. And it's always been done at the entire lease level when additional property has been added. So there is this historical precedent to to do it in that manner.
Turn your mic on.
You got your part one forty-one?
Yes, we have.
Well, when did that come out?
I believe that occurred in December of last year. It was delayed because of the COVID pandemic when the FAA shut down for about two years.
Looks like you have something on your mind, Commissioner Finnegan.
I do. There, there's no way I'm gonna vote on a fifty year lease. Frank, we just hired him. He's getting his feet wet. He hasn't had enough time, I think, to fully assess this situation. I appreciate the the economic impact that our airport will have and your contribution and maybe what you could do in the future. But I feel like we're, Steve has assembled a team to get us moving forward in the right way, as Commissioner Bayes was saying earlier, for the best economic impact. And I think we need to give him time to assess this situation. So I'd be willing to sign for another year, put your plan on hold, and then the county can vet to see if that's in the best interest of the county. But today, a fifty year lease is not in the best interest of our county.
Commissioner Bayes?
I would agree with Commissioner Finnegan. We have had a lot going on. As we know, we've hired a consultant to make a review of this airport, tell, both airports actually, to kind of come back and tell us what we're missing, what our opportunities are, kind of that SWOT analysis. And, you know, we've got a tremendous amount going on out there. We're looking at putting a fire station in, water suppression, three phase power, finishing out Watson Road. We've just got our appropriations from the state for nine million. We're putting to work the past five million from a couple of years ago. So we've got a lot going on at that airport. And I think, you know, we appreciate everything that you're doing, but I think at this point, I'm ready to make a motion to vote on an extension of a one year contract with another one year renewable to make sure that we can get through the vetting process. Even that, you know, it's just business to me, you know. There's, if you were capitalizing a hangar, which is a metal building, over fifty years, I I'm not sure on your depreciation schedule that that would really work. So that's exact, I, yes, I will make a motion that we extend the contract for one year.
Second.
Madam Attorney, my understanding is that we were looking for a consensus today. Can we do a vote on this?
I don't, I don't believe the.
This would come back at the next board meeting. If we can get a consensus, that would help us obviously with the with the agreement.
I'm just, I'm looking at the recommended action, presentation, provide staff direction. If the consensus is to approve, authorize the chair, as says, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the agreement between Citrus County once the agreement is received. So I think there's sufficient.
Coverage in the agenda?
Information on the agenda that if you wanted to move, it would be to extend the lease and authorize the chairman to sign the document after it's reviewed by my office.
Okay. Commissioner Canard, do you have any, you want to weigh in?
Well, I certainly would not support the fifty year lease. But I, but I would like to see something a little bit longer than the one year and and one year renewal. Because quite frankly, everybody's gonna need time still for this to come together. Both Frank and Right Rudder to continue with some of their business plan. I would like to see us do maybe three years or somewheres in that neighborhood to get, give them time to be able to develop. You know, they've done all the things we've asked them to do and more. So before they came out there as the current FBO, that airport was almost irrelevant. Even with a five thousand foot runway, there was nothing happening there. They have changed that. And I I would like to see us give them the confidence that that this board wants to see them continue to grow and and build out there, work together with Frank as our business park plans begin to come together. So I'd like to see a little bit longer contract anyway, but I'm on board. I wouldn't support the fifty years.
If I may clarify, our current contract contemplates a five year renewal, not a one year renewal.
Okay. Commissioner Bayes?
Again, I mean, I I'm strictly doing business here. It's nothing, but, you know, this was, the information was nice. But what I would really, as business partners, and that's what you're asking us to be, as a business partner, and as a business partner, I would have liked to have seen a business plan, you know, what your five, ten, fifteen year goal is. I'd also like to see financials and demonstrate what your strength is and where you're going and where you're gonna take this to. And and if we're gonna be business partners, that's, that's the type of information that I think that you would want from somebody on the other side if you were asking them to come in. And for that, considering what's in here and the direction that we've taken as far as getting a consultant and telling us what we're doing with these airports as far as our opportunities, I feel like right now we just need to go with the one year. And it may be totally in your favor. I mean, everything may work out perfect, but I just don't feel comfortable at this point.
Commissioner Canard?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna support the one year renewal. Their current contract allows for a five year renewal based on this board approving it. Then I believe they have, they have lived up to the contract. As I said, they've done everything we've asked them to do and more. I don't see why at this point we'd pull the rug out from underneath of them. We had a contract with them. That contract said that it, that it contemplated, I guess, a five year, five year renewal. I think we give them the five years. If they don't, if they don't live up to our expectations over those five years, then they know that it's coming. But at this point, they've, they've done everything we've asked them to do.
Anything further? I concur with Commissioners Finnegan and Bayes. And that is, I really, I grew up here. I mean, I know Inverness Airport very well from back in the day. And I, you guys are doing a great job. This is not remotely a vote of no confidence. In actual, the flip of that is that we have a whole lot of stuff that's coming down the pike in the next year or two because of Frank, because of this economic study we're doing. And I do think that this would end up bringing. And I do think that this would end up bringing this to a head a lot faster versus having it, you know, it's, people were great under deadlines, don't they? So to have a one-to-two-year deadline is going to be very helpful to try to bring some of these things to fruition and really figure out what we're doing out there versus letting it hang on for five years.
If you're telling us you're taking what we had agreed to in writing is a five-year renewal and you want to penalize us by taking it down to one year, you're telling us you don't want our business in Citrus County, frankly. And we'll have to take our investment elsewhere. So...
Sorry to hear that.
I just gave in a, a presentation that explains how we went above and beyond where any other operator could have done. And you guys are saying, I'm gonna penalize you and not live up to the contract that was signed by the Board of County Commissioners, going for a five-year renewal. So I don't know what more you would have asked from an FBO?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chan. I don't, I really don't see it that way. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I really don't. So, um...
Commissioner Cannard?
I completely agree with him. This is absolutely a vote of no confidence. When we change the contract, uh, from five-year to one-year, they've, they've done everything. I don't know, I don't know how you jump in and change, and change the contract at this point. Uh, they know the expectations. If they don't live up to the expectations over the next five years, then they know what's coming at the end of that. But they have gone all along this time out there, made our airport relevant and living up to the expectations and saying, okay, we're gonna go and get a five-year lease, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. They've done everything. So, uh, there, I, I am not gonna support this and, uh, I think it's, I think it's terrible that we're, that we're doing this to them. So...
Well, since there is a vote on the floor, I'm gonna have to open it to the public and, um, then I'll bring it back for a final round of board discussion. Is everybody all right with that?
Yep.
Would anybody like to address the board?
Yes, Josh Wood, President, CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. I've been involved in this project for over 20 years. I voted to buy the Inverness Industrial Park and it sat, and it sat, and it sat. Two of y'all were not on the board during the years that we all collectively went out and got the money for this project. Um, because we have this young, dynamic operator, that did bring attention to us. I don't think we would be where we would be without the attention that they brought in Tallahassee nationally to this little airport. Now, if there's some things behind the scenes that I'm not seeing, um, as far as what y'all wanna see, I think it would be better to give them a 90 days or 60 days, um, than five years because that's not gonna attract the kind of investment that they're bringing to the table. Five years doesn't do it, one year doesn't do it. So why, why don't we try to come together? Um, there's some underlying thing here that Frank's gonna do this, Frank's gonna do that. Well, Frank probably knows now what their plan is and, um, why can't everybody come together? Then we'll have a rational discussion about this. But, um, there were dust wheels rolling through that airport when these people took it over. There was nothing going on there, no return on investment. They fought through an administration that had disdain for that airport. I know that personally. Um, they, they did not spend the grant money that was available. They did not keep up their end of the bargain. They didn't fix a door. They didn't put in the parking lot. They didn't do a lot of things because they didn't believe that the airport was an economic driver. Now that y'all see it as an opportunity and your number one priority, you think something bigger and better's gonna happen and it may very well, but I'm loyal to the people that bring me to the dance and I can assure you, I was on the front lines, as was the rest of my team that's in the audience, bringing that money here. And Andy and Siobhan were 80% of the reason why the state put their treasure behind this airport. So let's be careful what message you're sending to Tallahassee and the public. Um, either give them some time to work it out and negotiate and then they could, you can all walk away. That's his business, but it would be a real problem for the county. Um, I'm a little bit perturbed and I'm sure y'all can see it, but to say, I'm gonna give you one year is ridiculous. Give them 90 days to give you what you want, working with Frank, and then give them enough time to amortize their improvements or part company. One year, even five years is gonna do it. But if there is a vote today, I hope it's either to continue this or for the five years. But really what they need is enough time to amortize their improvements. I'm sure if they have an investor, they're looking for something, just like any of y'all would in your business. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs citizen. I've been coming here for a lot of years. The airport has gotten put back and back and back. All right. Five years is not a long contract when you consider how slow things move. The Citrus Springs Civic Association, we rented the building out at the community center in Citrus Springs. Our contract was for a three-year renewal. After the first year, we were given three years each year with an increase. Because once you get into it and you get set, you've now got all the expenses that you've put into it, addresses, phone numbers, paperwork, okay? That doesn't take one day or one year. To give them the five-year that was in the backup material is only fair to them. It's not gonna take 30, 60, or 90 days. It's gonna take time to get with Frank and get things going. Since 2006, when I started coming to these meetings, we're still in the talking stage. We finally got some money, we finally got some ground broken. How many years later? 17 years. You're talking about this person that actually is working at the airport, making money, bringing things to the county, paying taxes, paying taxes to the county, helping us provide services for our people. We need to at least honor what we had said and I agree with Commissioner Cannard. The five-year is not an outrageous amount. Let them do and work with Frank and have the time to do it so that no mistakes are made and that it is done properly and in order. I'd like to see them bring in helicopter repair. Because who has helicopters? The sheriff, mosquito control, and EMS. We send our helicopters way over across wherever to get them fixed every so many hours of use. Why not have him work on some plans with Frank and possibly bring helicopter repair and service here as part of our airport? There are lots of things that they need to talk about and develop. One year is not gonna do it. 30, 60 days is not gonna do it. They may come up with a plan, but it's not gonna get initiated or tried. They need the time to try. It takes time to get things working. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Would anyone else like to speak from the public? Seeing none, I'll close open to the public. Any further discussion? Commissioner Baze?
Um, Mr. Howard or Frank, would either one of you like to address the issue of what was discussed about the, the 50-year lease and, uh, maybe what documentation was requested or asked for or, I mean...
Yeah, Frank.
Can you kind of give us an idea of why this is being brought to us with a 50-year lease?
Yeah, I don't, other than, I mean, we had, we had one, Frank, I think has had some discussions. I was at a meeting, uh, with Mr. Chan and it was, uh, related to the relationship of building this hangar. I mean, the, the amount of money that would be involved with that. Um, he did, uh, provide a document recently. I think he's gonna give that to you, uh, with a third party that's come forward, I think, but that's what the driver is. I think I've not got anything ever in writing. Uh, this was all verbal. Um, that's why, uh, I wanted to make sure he actually gave that to you today and, uh, explained, um, what he was looking for in the terms, because to date, we have not received anything in writing formally from him.
And, and what, as far as a lease, um, I, I know that there's been some brief conversation that I think Frank has indicated that the lease is not as strong of a lease as what other airports around us have and that, you know, we felt like we just don't have the expertise in that and that we may need to look for some stronger language on a lease.
And I think that third party, uh, that's looking, um, that will create this business plan is gonna look at all those subjects. Um, if, can Frank come forward? Frank should be here in the audience. Um, but, uh, that's my understanding. They'll look at all those things. Obviously, there's, sometimes you're comparing apples to bananas with these airports because they're all a little different. Um, and what we offer here is a little different than Brooksville and other places like that. And I know Frank's tried to do it, a deep dive the best he can, um, but we, we're confident this study, I think, is gonna, you know, put us in the right, right direction.
And that is correct. So the, um, external study, the consultant will look at the terms of the leases on both FBOs, so Crystal River and Inverness. Um, so that is important, but I would, and, you know, I spoke, I think mostly with the chairman, who's not here today, um, during the briefing, but I'll say a couple of things since I'm up here. Um, I had advised to keep any kind of ground lease related to a hangar away from this lease for the FBO because I think those are two completely different animals. Um, the FBO is a lease, is a project that, again, there's commitment, there's been a history of the FBO doing what we've asked them to do. So I caution to keep those separate. They sort of came out together and the boards had to consider them both. Um, I think that hangar lease is a distraction from the actual agreement, which is to provide services in FBO. Now, I'm gonna put on my business recruitment and expansion hat. Andy's business is an existing business and I will work for existing businesses before I will go out and run around and try and land the new shiny business that comes to Citrus County with no skin in the game. Um, these folks have skin in the game. They provided. Um, I feel like, uh, again, it's not my place to make the decision, but I'm gonna advocate for them because businesses need certainty. None of us would like uncertainty about our future. Um, they've invested in, in the community. They're doing what we asked them to do. So I would caution against any kind of interruption like that. Now, um, we can look at the terms of the lease based on what the consultant comes back with. We should have that information by early next year. Um, and there are opportunities to negotiate on areas where let's, we actually don't know what the county's doing right now. We may be giving away the store at both of these FBOs, but it may be that actually, we're giving them a pretty bad deal and they're not as competitive with other FBOs like the ones in Hernando County or Marion County. So I would say caution, um, provide certainty to this business that has invested. Let's look at the data that comes back from that consultancy and then we'll have a better idea of negotiating. It doesn't mean we can't negotiate for better terms. It's just gonna be a more informed negotiation, is my opinion.
May I add to you?
Commissioner Baze?
So do you have a recommendation for us today then?
Um, I would approve the lease on the five-year terms because I believe that that gives this business certainty. That's, that is what is on the table right now. Um, I, I'm not aware of any complaints where the FBO has not provided outstanding services to our aviation community. Um, nobody from the aviation board has raised any concerns, so I think we're looking at a clean slate and a business that is invested in our community. Um, again, uh, let's look at those terms when the lease, uh, is under scrutiny by an outside consultant, a totally objective party, then we've got some terms so that when either one of the FBOs comes to us and says, hey, we'd really like this deal, we can say, okay, but we're giving it away here, so we need to tighten up on this. You know, we're gonna cut your margin a little on that, but maybe we can work with you on this one. I think that's the way to approach this.
So are you suggesting that five-year lease that we can renew, uh, we negotiate in 12 months based on this information or is just a five-year lease?
Well, I think the terms of the lease can be amended at any time if we find, uh, let's say they say, uh, we want this kind of deal so we can get a new fuel complex, right? So we can say, okay, we'll come to the table with that, but you're gonna have to give us this concession on the lease where we've identified from a consultant that we're giving you too good of a deal here. That, that's just normal business, I'd say. Um, again, when you're in a contract, right, both parties can negotiate. So I don't feel like it's, okay, this is done and then five years, we have no negotiation. So I'm pretty certain that in that scrutiny of the leases and the agreement and the way the airports are run, there're gonna be lots of things that we can get better. And I think that's part of the negotiating with these, uh, with these FBOs and, and I would lump both of those in there.
Frank, you just got the side eye from the attorney.
Okay, let's clarify. Um, again, you know, when folks want things, I mean, most contracts, leases can be negotiated. Um, yeah, things are moving target. I mean, case in point, Mr. Chan's insurance went up significantly, right? What's the first thing he did? Came to us and said, hey, how can we work on this lease to make it work for both parties? So, I mean, again, that's sort of how it works because there's always these outside factors that come. That's an area where you say, okay, that's a external cost to do in business, but is there a way we can split that with you, keep your business growing, providing services, continuity? So I think there are opportunities to negotiate, even if we do this five-year renewal.
Well, I would amend my motion then to a five-year with amendable terms on a 12-month rolling basis.
Madam Attorney, do you want to weigh in on that before we go any further?
I, I, I agree with Frank that parties can always have discussions, but in the end, if discussions don't come to a meeting of the minds, then the, the black and white words on a paper prevail. So you can say, I, I don't know how to enforce what you just said, Commissioner. I, I don't know how to enforce a five-year...
So you can't, you can't do a five-year lease and then you can amend it on one-year terms of, that are agreeable to both parties? So if this, if this consultant comes back and says, we're getting the raw end or they're getting the raw end, that we can't renegotiate that at, on that 12 months?
I don't know what incentive the person who's on the better end is going to have to change the terms just to suit the person who's on the worse end. I, I can't promise you that the parties can come to a meeting of the minds a year down the road.
And I agree with that. I mean, ultimately, it's consensual. Uh, the lease is gonna be the lease and I agree 100%, but if both parties can come to the table, but otherwise, we're gonna be stuck with this five-year lease, 100%.
If, if I'm on the winning end and I'm, 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 I have no incentive to, to negotiate.
The, the incentive and, um, uh, I'll address that first. The incentive for the person who's on the winning end is when that person wants something outside of the contract. If it's us and we want something additional from them, then we've gotta be willing to give up something as well. Or if they come to us and say, you know, we'd really... That lease went through the aviation authority for their input on it. And I said, I don't know if it did or not. I found out that it did not. And he said, you need to make sure in the future. He came here to oppose it. He had told me that he was going to oppose that surprisingly because it was a bad deal for Wright Rudder.
I believe I know who you're talking about.
He said, he said, the deal that they just signed with you, there is no way they can financially make it. He said, you guys need to revisit that. You need to bring forward the, the Cool Jerry, or Gary Cool formula. He said, that is a much more fair formula and give your FBO a fighting chance to make it out there. You just had one that bombed out there. Give them a chance. I talked to Randy privately about it. He came back later and said, there's no support on the board to revisit it. We've got, the county's got a very good deal here. We're well protected. If they go under, it's because of their own mismanagement. Here we are today. They have not gone under. They've, they've not only survived, but they've thrived out there. I mean, I just already, I hate already that they have doubt in their mind about our support for what they've done. In the face of somebody who knows the industry very well, they survived and they're, and they're, they're growing out there. I, I would love to see this board give them our unconditional support, support their five-year lease, help, help them to continue to grow. It doesn't mean we give away the farm, but I don't believe we have given away the farm. The individual I spoke with whenever this was that we first approved it, he didn't think we were giving away the farm. He thought we're, we were killing the, killing the golden goose that, that could be out there. So that's my, that's my position on it. I hope, I hope that we rethink this a little bit. I'm thankful you've amended your motion. My, my voice would be to, my support would be, support the five-year renewal, wish them the best and let's keep moving forward with consultant and them working together with Frank.
Chair.
Yes. I know, we got to go back to the motion. Do you still wish to, given now that you've heard all of this, do you still wish to amend the motion? Because if you do, she needs to amend her second.
Yes, but is there anything else from the administrator or, or Frank as economic development that you would like to, you know, have out of this before we would amend the motion?
So you're not amending it yet? We're still discussing possibly amending it. I think that's the answer.
My, my only comments would be any of these things that even come out of the study, you're going to take time. So anything that comes out of there, we're going to take this to the board and the pace of this county has not been the fastest. So there, time's on our side, but we need more time. So I'm actually, the same thing with Frank. I think we need more time with that, with them as well. So I'm open to that as well, what Frank had said, but I think we're going to need more time coming out of that study to get the consensus of the board moving forward with what this looks like. We do need more time to be able to accomplish that.
Commissioner Bays?
Well, that was our whole point in the beginning of the one year was just like Frank said, it's going to be into next year before we get our study done. So even for Wright Rudder, we were wanting to move ahead, doing things the right way. Did not want to say this publicly, but everyone's saying, you know, and I'm sure with, with flight, maybe it's been a fantastic job, but when Commissioner Bays and I were first elected, I mean, not too long after, we were hammered with a big issue out at the airport that was dangerous and potentially litigious that, that we all had to handle. So that was a grave concern of me just walking in and being new. So now that we have professionals on board, we have Frank looking at the economic development, and then we have the consultant coming in for this, that was my whole point about the one year and that's why I was sticking to it because now we have a year. If they're a good partner, we're going to have a consultant looking at all those things and saying, this is what's going to be the best way to keep them and this is what's best for our community moving forward. So I, I don't, I don't regret seconding your motion at all.
Commissioner Bays?
I'm going to go back to Frank. Frank, as the economic development, you've stood there and put your hat on and said that you will advocate for the people that are here.
Yes, as an existing business, businesses want certainty wherever they can find that. And if that means the lease under their feet, that is an example of certainty. I think what the problem is here is this lease ends in like the end of the month, right?
Correct.
So we are at the last possible minute to have this discussion and debate. So unfortunately, we're dealing with the lease template that is what it is. We're dealing with a timeline that is coming up rapidly. So I don't even know how, and this is where Denise will have to answer that, but I don't know that there's a lot of time to throw different terms in this thing before we have a vacant FBO. So again, not the greatest position to be in, but I think the best option is probably to renew the existing lease that's on the table, give the company certainty. The last thing we want is an interruption of services at, you know, take off the business retention and expansion hat where I advocate for the business. The last thing we want as a community is to have a disruption of services at Inverness Airport to renegotiate another lease with somebody else. Let's say, you know, these folks don't get the lease. Now we've got an interruption of services. We lose momentum. How long is that going to take before we get another agreement on the table? Still, the study's going to be going. We're not going to be having terms available from that consultant to create a new lease template if we have a business interruption. So that's would be my caution.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
You said that we're at the end of the lease. It was my understanding that Mr. Chan wouldn't sign the five-year agreement. So why are we at the bitter end? I don't like having a proverbial gun to my head to make a decision because it was push, push, push. So was that on the county or was that on the FBO?
Yeah, I don't know. I just know that the lease is up, I believe, at the end of this month. So.
And it is, it has been sent. It was sent a few weeks back.
I, I stand by my opinion. I want shorter in order to get this study done and want, and I'm going to say it again, this is not to create an air of, not of uncertainty nor of not having faith in Wright Rudder. I do. We just need to get through this economic study, which is coming out in January, and then we can actually look at all of our lease terms, do everything else and make sure that we have a, a win-win situation for both county and the FBO. That would still be my opinion, but I'm one of four. Anybody like to? Mr. Kennard.
Well, we're an hour and 17 minutes into this meeting and already we have created concern with at least two individuals in doing business in this county. Uncertainty is what keeps people away. There are a lot of other counties that, that have certainty, that have stability and this is, this is a bad precedent. I hope that says, doesn't go down this road.
Well, I, I will say this. I, I take objection to what you said. I don't think this creates uncertainty with doing business with our county. I think it sounds, sends a loud and clear message that yes, we are open for business, but we're going to be picky and we are going to get the right kind of business here. So that, that's how I perceive it, perceive it. I don't think it's a, that we're there, we're not here for business. It's just we're going to do good business. And I think far too long this county has taken a sidestep in what we've accepted to be good business. I am going to amend my motion. I'm going to amend it for a two-year lease. I think that gives us time to get this, this study underway. It is, is by no means a vote of non-confidence, but I think we have got to do the right course of business here and take some action that sets a precedent for going forward in the right manner.
I'll amend my second.
Since it's amended, I need to open to the public again?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Frank.
Josh Wood, President, CEO of the Citrus County Chamber. I agree with Commissioner Card. I think y'all are making a mistake. I think the optics are awful on this, just absolutely awful. It's not being backed up by anything that I would listen to in a boardroom of business people. There's, there's been no business reasoning behind this other than maybe we can get a better deal or maybe the consultant will say this, or maybe the reality is you have a young couple that has brought our airport from nothing to nationally recognized. And because y'all think there's, the pasture's greener on the other side, you're willing to gamble this away. He just stood here and he said, I'm packing. If I don't, if I get a one-year lease, I've seen that steering two-year lease and y'all, two of y'all looked at him and said, sorry to hear that. Sorry to hear that. Not one thank you for what you've done for this community. And so I think it's a big mistake and like I say, maybe something in that contract that says, we're going to give you five years knowing that when the consultant's report comes back, we're going to negotiate within the parameters of that. That can be done. Denise's job is to tell you, nothing can be done. My job is to tell you that everything can be done. And that would solve all of that. Cause Commissioner Bays, I see where you're going is you don't want to leave stuff on the table. You, you, you have to listen to the taxpayers and, but like I say, if I didn't have 25 years of blood, sweat and tears on this one issue, I wouldn't be so passionate about it. And so please try to figure out something to where you can give them enough time to attract investment. I like what Frank said, the hangar thing, maybe, maybe that's a whole different lease because y'all do those all the time. Maybe that's a different lease. So I would say one year, look at the consultant's recommendation plus or minus, you know, who's the winner, who's the loser? Who wins in those things are usually the people with integrity. So I'm not worried about y'all negotiating that. But a five-year lease with the renegotiation upon the consultant's recommendation, otherwise I think you're going to have a real backlash to this decision.
It takes me time to get here and I have to pull my pants because they're falling down. Anyways, of course, I have to run my big mouth. From what I see
Your name for the record, please.
Oh, my name is Frank Papson from Arrowhead. From what I see and from what I understand, you people signed a five-year contract, five-year lease, five years ago, with the stipulation that you're going to be able to renew it for five more years unless there was a problem with, with, with the lease and you didn't like what they were doing. And it's from what I understand today, these people not only did exactly what they were supposed to do, but they did more than they were supposed to do. And what I also understand is you don't want to give them the five-year lease anymore. You want to cut it to one year. And these people are saying, gee, you know, you promised us five, now you're telling us one and we want this 50 years because we want to invest $5 million more dollars to build, build this hangar and you're, you turn around and cut the rug out from underneath them. There's $69 million in economic development, okay, or benefit, that's the word, $69 million worth of benefit that these people presented and you're taking a chance on throwing it away. If they move, what are you going to have to do then? Because then you won't have anything and they'll go back to the way you had it before. So my opinion, give them the five-year lease.
Thank you, Frank.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. The five years was what they had come to here. They had made a proposal, but they didn't give you the paperwork for it. But the five years was what they had come to here approved. Two years will not get them enough time. You got a consultant that's going to come back in January. I have seen consultants that this board has hired. Okay, they come back and then, well, this we didn't like, that we, and then they have to take and do more work on it and more work on it. It will probably take almost five years to get what you need from all these consultants that we're hiring or paying for and whatever else we're doing. It's taken over 20 years to get this far in the airport. The airport is actually operating. It's actually making money for some people. It's making money for businesses in Citrus County. It is not detracting from what I can see, like if you put five different car washes at the same corner. Okay, it has, it's not apples to apples. You're talking about something that's actually operational, not bothering anybody, wanting to grow, wanting to have stability in their life. A five-year lease is not unrealistic for a corporation. A lot of landowners would love to get a rental that they would say, sign a five-year lease. The Civic Association, we signed a three-year lease with no questions. There, there was no question. Three, three years was wonderful. We would have taken five. I would have signed for five because it gave us the stability to know where our business was going to be located, what we could do, what we couldn't do. That's all he needs today is to know that for the next five years, even if you got to come back and renegotiate things, and you can always come back and renegotiate. The Civic Association, we came back and talked to the board. We talked to Randy about different things. You know, granted, you know, we got a little bit and you guys got a little bit and it worked out. And you can always come back and renegotiate. You know, whoever's going to win is going to be our citizens. We're going to have an operational airport. We're going to bring in money to the county. I think that's what our goal is and your mission is when I read the mission statement. And not to bother our environment too much. Well, where they're at is already where they're at. You're not going to be doing the damage that you think you're going to do. And I really think that, you know, five years is a good number for them.
Commissioner Bays?
I just want to remind everyone, the FBO did not come up here and ask for five years. They've never asked for five years. They actually refused to sign five years. They asked for 50. They asked for 50 years and we weren't going to do that. So we're working on a plan from there with our consultant because we're certainly not going to do 50 years right now. And as far as conversations that you wouldn't hear from a boardroom, we're businesswomen. In a boardroom, you would, you would say, I'm not going to negotiate a contract that you're throwing something else in. Just like Frank said, they should be separated, but that didn't happen. That, that was a tactic. So we're trying to resist that tactic. That's all. And there were some concerns this past year, grave concerns, but, and we all thanked them. I think most of us after the presentation, we all said thank you and we do thank you and we want to be good business partners and work forward. But you didn't ask for five years. You asked for 50 to trust us on a hangar project with, in a boardroom, no financial plan, no, this is how it's going to work. Just, just trust me and approve 50 years. Well, nobody's going to do that. I couldn't see anybody, even Commissioner Kennard, fighting for a year, said he would not do 50 years. So again, nobody even asked for five years. We're trying to make it work, but not at 50.
If I may point a clarification, there was four separate meetings that many of the commissioners were able to attend about the lease negotiations and it was the county originally who suggested a change to the lease, not Wright Rudder. There was no refusal to sign the document. The, the meetings were very open to the public and at the La Canto Government Building with Steve, with Frank and with several of the commissioners. So there were several meetings about it and what we followed was the advice of Steve and Frank of how to present this. So there wasn't a bait and switch tactic or anything like that or refusal to sign a lease. So I would say that's maybe a misunderstanding there with respect to that.
I guess you didn't want all commissioners to attend?
No, no, we, I, I did. No, we absolutely did. It's, but every commissioner can't be in this, because of the sunshine laws is how that was set up. So I apologize if that was done incorrectly for those meetings. We were definitely trying to move this forward. It was initially the county that requested modifications to the lease, not Wright Rudder. So we were ready, ready to move forward with the regular five years, which is what is contemplated in our contract and what we expected. However, the county requested the change, not Wright Rudder, just point of order. And then Jeff, point for our original negotiation, you are correct, we did overpay. We voluntarily stepped up and paid 40% more than necessary for a couple of reasons. But just to point that out, we paid 40% more than the county was requesting to for the lease payments to be. And so that was a concern of the gentleman at the time, but clearly we've made our rent payments and have excelled. So.
Yes, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yeah, we just for clarity, we didn't have multiple commissioners at any meetings to so for clear, clarity. I think I only attended one meeting with one commissioner present, which is not here today. So I don't know of any other commissioners that met with Wright Rudder. I think the, what we did was we had a, I think, good discussions with staff. There's been a lot of staff, you know, discussions and things like that. But ultimately, you've got to bring a proposal forward. And today I've not seen anything in writing that talked about 50, other than verbal at this point. And I do know that I think there was a phone call that Andy, I think you made to me when you received the document from staff that you were surprised when they sent it, I think, which was for five years. So just for clarification on that, you did have a document for multiple weeks that did talk about a five-year extension in it. You had an ample opportunity to sign that document if you wanted to get that back to us. But obviously, what you're asking to do is, is a separate, separated 50 years is different than what's in the original agreement. And that's all we had to work off is the current agreement we have today. So without board direction coming in here today.
You're correct that there is a, a five-year agreement there. You're correct that there is a five-year agreement there. But of course, the county had requested changes that increase our costs by approximately $20,000 on an annual basis.
That's just, that's standard business risk that the county would absorb because of, you know, flight schools and things like that. It's not, that's not the activities that the county's actually doing on their own.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I think it's highly inappropriate that we would have our administrator put on the spot trying to negotiate something in public. I don't think this should be happening. I mean, for, for the sake of our administrator.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chan. I appreciate it. Madam Attorney.
If I might, I, I understand my role as your legal advisor. I don't believe my role is to be here and be a salesperson. I don't believe my, my role is to make everything seem like it's sunshine and roses. When the rubber meets the road and you come to me and say, why did you let us sign this contract? And they won't negotiate, they won't change the terms. Are we stuck with the contract that we signed? It is my legal opinion that you are stuck with the contract that's in black and white. So it's not that I'm, I'm here trying to tell you nothing can be done. I was asked a direct question and I answered that direct question.
Thank you. And for the record, open to the public is closed. Any further board discussion? So we have a motion and a second on a two-year extension. Yes? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Second Vice Chair Base.
Approve.
Commissioner Diana Finnegan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kennard.
No.
And First Vice Chair Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. Thank you for your time. All right, 1:45, 45 minutes late. Lindsay Redding from Director of Community Initiatives, Citrus County Community Charitable Foundation and Well, Florida Council Health Survey. Ms. Redding, thank you so much for your patience.
Hi, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Lindsay Redding. I'm with Well, Florida Council. And about a year ago, Well, Florida Council was, was asked to help facilitate a needs assessment for Citrus County specifically. And so the reason I'm here today is to provide you with some updates about what we learned through that assessment. And there are people in the room and also people on the board who I saw at some of those meetings. So, so thank you for participating. I know we're running behind. I've created a long slide set. We're not going to look at all those. I just want to hit the highlights with you and let you know what's happening next. So for some background information, about every five years or every three to five years, county health departments go through a process of developing a community health needs assessment. And the purpose of that is really to identify gaps and resources and services and programs that are needed for the community. Luckily, in, in Citrus County, you all have a great group, the Citrus County Community Charitable Foundation. And through many years, you know, we have worked together so that this cycle of the needs assessment, those two groups can work together. And the intent here is that this end document of your community health needs assessment will then be used to help make decisions about funding that the Citrus County Charitable Foundation has and how they can support the community with those funds. So this collaborative process was a process that took about a year to complete. And the next steps in that process are to develop what we call a community health improvement plan. So we've completed the assessment. We know what the, what the issues are, what our strategic priorities are going to be. And now we're in the, the next steps of identifying what do we do. So today, I'm hoping just to walk you through a few things. If we can maybe get to slide three. I'm going to try not to skip too many. So, so on slide three, what you should see is a, is a picture of the Citrus County Community Health Needs Assessment document. And that particular document is what is now available to the community. And I want to, you know, be clear on the next slide that there is a process that we follow to develop this needs assessment. So the first step is that we wanted to use an evidence-based process. Now, this process is used throughout the country, many different counties and many different parishes throughout the nation. It's called mobilizing for action through planning and partnerships. And it was developed with the CDC and the National Association of City and County Health Officials. So the reason that we use this particular process to develop needs assessments and strategic plans is because it's evidence-based. It's also because it allows us to strategically plan. So through strategic planning, we work with community. We want the community to own the plan. So it becomes a community process. Now, what you'll see is you'll see that there's a sort of a picture there on the, on the right. Looks like a circle. And inside that circle, you'll see the six phases of map. And on the outside, you'll see what we call the assessments. So for Citrus County, we worked on three of those four assessments. One of those assessments has sort of been dropped by the model. So we did not do that assessment. But the first assessment is called the Community Health Status Assessment. And that's really where we look at things like demographics, socioeconomics, hospital utilization data and that sort of thing. So we're creating a picture of, you know, what is going on in Citrus County. And we're comparing that to Florida. So we want to know how does Citrus do? And how are the residents here in comparison to their counterparts in the state of Florida? Then we also do something called the Community Themes and Strengths Assessment. And that's where we gather input from community members. So in Citrus County, you all had a robust community health status assessment and a community health strengths and themes assessment. And by that, I mean, you all did more than you absolutely had to, right? So there are some standards that we all want to follow, but you all went beyond those standards. So for your community, you not only had what we consider secondary data. So that's data that's already been collected and utilized for a different purpose before. And we reutilize it for your purpose. Then we also had three different opportunities for primary data. And so for, for, for Citrus County, we had focus groups. We had a community member survey. And we also facilitated some key informant interviews. So those are one-to-one interviews with, with folks in the community. And all of these steps were guided by a steering committee. So back when this process started, Mr. Rubio, who I don't think is here today, but Mr. Rubio helped us, you know, gather a long list of leaders in your community to participate in the process. And they were with us throughout that process, participating in meetings, reviewing data, helping us promote the survey, recruiting focus group participants, key informant interviews and that sort of thing. So at the end of collecting all this information, we had a series of meetings to share the data with the steering committee. And the steering committee worked to identify what they considered the strategic issues and priorities facing Citrus County. And it's important to remember that sometimes there are issues facing a community that can be addressed. And sometimes there are issues that perhaps cannot be addressed right now. So they had to go through a process to identify what can we address, what can we not address? So we're going to keep on going through, through the slide set here. And if you don't mind, I'm going to skip us quite a ways. I want to skip us down to slide eight, if you don't mind. So here are some of the high-level information that we learned throughout the process. We learned that in Citrus County, our residents have high rates of heart disease, stroke, hypertension, cancer. We had higher rates of deaths related to COVID, diabetes, Alzheimer's disease, overweight and obesity, chronic low respiratory disorders and so on. And having, you know, seen all that, now we have a little bit of a lower life expectancy here in Citrus than in other counties. So those were things of concern to, to the committee. We also learned that there are some health behaviors that are contributing to this as well on slide 10. Those are specifically things related to substance misuse and also use of emergency departments and hospitalizations related to substance misuse. We noticed that there's a, you know, high level of tobacco use and use of other types of nicotine product delivery systems, physical inactivity and folks reporting poor nutrition. We have a lack of chronic disease management education opportunities. We're seeing some late entry into prenatal care. So all of us, you know, are probably proponents of getting treatment for, for pregnancy in your first, your first trimester, right? That's so important. So we look at that to see where, you know, where our entry into care for prenatal care. We also have some, some rates of violence and child neglect that seemed elevated. So these are all things that were of concern to the steering committee and to the community. We also know that, you know, in, in part, Citrus County has limited access to healthcare resources. So our rates for physicians are lower than state rates. And we also know that, you know, that is perhaps leading to some inappropriate use of emergency departments. So if folks can't gain access at a primary care, perhaps they're getting that access somewhere else. So if we continue on, and we all know that you have an older population here, right? And part of that means that we have higher needs. So as we age, we get more chronic illnesses. We need to have more prescriptions. We need more access to healthcare than less. And these are all things that we learn, not only in your secondary data, but also through focus groups, your key informant interviews and also your surveys. So now you want to know, what are we going to do about all this, right? So we've identified all these issues. We know we've got some great resources here. We know we're missing some. What are we going to do? And we posed that question to the steering committee. And so the steering committee, if you go to slide 25, the steering committee said, okay, here's what we think are our five major kind of buckets of issues that we believe we need to work on. But also, we have some ideas for how to work on them, which is critical, right? So they said, hey, we've got an issue with healthcare providers. We need more. We need more healthcare providers here. Mental healthcare is a challenge. We know people need these services. They're not getting them always. Maybe we need more. Substance misuse, we're seeing a lot of substance misuse issues. We're seeing folks going to the emergency room. We know it's creating a strain on EMS. That's a problem. We, we can work on that. Affordable, safe housing is other, was another issue that they wanted to talk about. And then finally, there's this concept of effective health communication. And really, that's more about utilizing the resources that we have in Citrus County and being sure that everyone knows about those resources. And also so that each resource knows about other resources, right? So through these strategic priority areas, the strategic planning group or our steering committee also developed some goals. And so the idea over the next three to five years is that they're going to develop objectives related to each of these goals and hopefully receive some funding from, from the foundation to help push those forward. So for healthcare providers, the major goal here is to increase the number of healthcare providers. For mental healthcare, they want to facilitate access to quality mental healthcare. They want to increase access. They want to provide support towards Baker Act facility with community leaders. So I'm sure that's you all, right? And how do we get that service here in county? They also want to enhance mental health residential services and care coordination for those services. For substance use, they're looking at improving coordination for folks with substance use disorders. There's a lot of discussion about where folks are getting those services, in county or out of county. If they have to go out of county, are we doing a good job coordinating that? If not, can we do better? Talking about establishing some service sites in Citrus. So can, can we get some more places for folks to go? Can we increase community education on substance use in the population? Is there a way to beef that up and create some prevention opportunities? For obtainable safe housing, they want to improve communication on housing obtainability and safe neighborhoods so that folks know where they can get services. What opportunities are there in the county already? Do people know about those? Let's make sure that they do. And they also want to work on effective health communication, which would then impact all of these other strategic priorities. So in sum, you know, the, the idea here is that every three to five years, we're going to assess what is the health of our community? What are issues that are creating challenges for folks in our population to receive the services they need? What can we do about those issues, utilizing resources we have? And then, of course, implementing a plan that will hopefully improve access to services or quality of life here in Citrus. So I believe that the next step is that the Health Department and the Community Health Improvement Planning Body here in Citrus County is going to be working on the development of the Community Health Improvement Plan. I also believe that the foundation will be releasing their next opportunity for funding sometime in January. And so the idea is that that funding will, you know, follow one of those five strategic priority areas, which would be healthcare providers, mental healthcare, substance use, affordable, safe housing and effective communication. I know that was a whirlwind. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Great report. I know some of the work that we've been doing through the Public Safety Coordinating Council and a study that's been done throughout the state of Florida. And one of the problems that they've identified is that, particularly in Florida, the money follows individual programs and not the individual. So we are spending a whole bunch of money, particularly on mental health and substance abuse, but it's not following the individual and we don't know the outcomes. Is there a way that we can work with your group to start to help identify that? I think it's highly important also to note that, you know, mental health system in the United States is not set up to detect or treat mental illness on the early onset of the disease. And it's noted that 75% of all mental health conditions are present by the age of 25 and 50% before the age of 14. And they, you know, the studies tell us if we don't start to address these early on, that we're losing the cost benefit factor of being able to treat these. And so I would like to work with your group more on that to see how, through the Public Safety Coordinating Council, that we can start to collaborate.
And I, I think, you know, that's a really great point. Another thing I'd like to add to that is, you know, we, per capita in Florida, are very low in funding for mental health and substance misuse, which adds, you know, to some of these challenges. There, there are opportunities to do things like coordinated intake and referrals, which would basically mean that communities could say, okay, if we have someone who needs a, a mental health or a substance misuse service, we want them to call this number. And then that number is sort of the central hub for all the service providers, regardless of the funding stream, so that there's a coordinated place for that. Some communities do have business agreements such that different providers can share information about patients or clients such that they know, are we getting a duplication of service? And then they can coordinate that, that system of care for that patient. I've seen that done a lot with community paramedicine as well. So there are definitely things that can be done. But, you know, it would be laying the infrastructure, you know, to make it successful.
Maybe the foundation, that's your, your gift to fund.
I'm looking back at the foundation.
I think that would be money well spent. I mean, I think if we can coordinate all of that, that will help us get to some real results.
Thank you. Anything further, board? Thank you, Ms. Redding.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Okay, open to the public. Three minutes, unless you have a letter on file. And then we'll give you five. Please let us know, though, and state your name for the record. And you're back, Frank.
Frank Papson from Arrowhead. Listen, I just came back from a vacation in Connecticut. And I was there the entire month of July. Prior to me leaving, we had a new addition to the Arrowhead community, which was a pot-growing facility. And I didn't, I had no objections to the fact that they were going to grow pot there. And, and so I didn't really get involved with anything until I came back. And then I found out that there's a kettle of worms floating around here because of the fact that, number one, they installed a fence, an eight-foot fence. And, and there was an argument about how high the fence was. And then I found out that in April, the planning board allowed them to put up an eight-foot fence in Arrowhead. And so it's going through zoning over there because of the complaint and zoning. But if the board, if the planning board allowed them to put up an eight-foot fence, then zoning just wasn't informed. Well, my objections isn't so much the fact that there's, they're going to grow this. My objections comes when I turned around and went on their website where they advertise for $50 a person, they can spend a weekend at their camp with them supplying all of the psychedelic medication that they can find legally. And that they would also have access to a boat ramp. And that they would also have access to the springs. And I find objection to this fact because living there as long as I have. And I find objection to this fact because, living there as long as I have, I do not have access to the springs, and I do not have access to the loading docks, boat docks, because they're on private property, and I would have to get permission from the people who own the property in order for me to do this. And from what I understand, none of these people that own these facilities or own this property will allow this at all. And it strikes me strange that I'm sitting here today, listening to you cut the feet out from underneath a project at the airport, and then okaying a project at Arrowhead, expecting to get lots of money for the sale of marijuana. And I have a strong objection to this. And I think it's, I know it's going through, it's going through the courts now, but I'm really surprised that you didn't have a public hearing, or you at least never even notified anybody from the community. And I think that's a letdown. And that's my two cents. Thank you.
You know the drill. Stick around. We'll answer you as soon as everyone's done. Because, oh, do I have an answer for you, Frank? That's worth sticking around for. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Madam Chair, I'm Dr. Carmen Kubitschek, Inverness Village Four. I'm sure it's a thorn in everyone's side here, but, and I know Commissioner Davis, that you are working diligently on this project, but I don't want it to go away. I want people to realize that we still have a big issue. I understand Mary Jensen is no longer employed here, and I understand that she had a vision, I guess, where maybe we could have gotten our streets paved, did not necessarily have to buy homes, and now I don't know where that's going to stand. So I'm here to find out what your next step is. The other thing is, Mr. Howard and Commissioner Davis, we had a meeting, I want to say in December, maybe in January, and we talked about having a workshop. I've inquired about the workshop, and I still haven't gotten a response. I think our residents really need information, and they also need to be brought up to par on what's going on. I know that there's always some of us that are loyal and coming, but everyone needs to get involved. I don't know how we're going to do that. I really don't. We have tried, but we have a problem. I guess you all know that, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't go away. Commissioner Finnegan, you have made comments about your constituents, you know, having to maybe feel, be part of the burden in paying for this. I just want to remind everyone that we're all taxpayers, not just your constituents. I received a notice saying that I'm going to be paying taxes on waste management when I have to pay privately to have my garbage picked up, so I'm paying for your constituents also. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we are really fighting for this. Alice Weber has given you plenty of information. I don't know what you all do with that information, but I really advise all of you to read it because she has done a good job in finding out and researching stuff that your attorney should be doing. So again, thank you so much and have a great day.
Thank you.
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs. Citrus Springs has a community center that seats over 600 people. It is owned by the county. In order to use that building, you just have to pay the normal people that are already working there, their hourly wage to keep it clean, keep it open, stock the restrooms. It doesn't cost $1,300 to have a meeting there for the board. I see that you would like to go to Central Florida College at a cost of at least $1,300. There is no reason, if you can't have a meeting here because you anticipate a large number of people, that you cannot use an already existing county building. I have brought this up in the past, and people thought, the other board at least thought they would consider it because it was a good idea. There is ample parking. There are restrooms. It's nice and flat and level, nice and easy, accessible from West Citrus Springs Boulevard, from 41, from 491, any way you want to go. If you're anticipating a lot of people from Pine Ridge for this September 12th meeting, it's a lot easier for them to get there than to go to Central Florida College, especially for a 501 time certain meeting, when there's more traffic on 491. So I am suggesting that you strongly think, before spending hard-paid taxpayer dollars by me, which have are going, are going to be increased because there's no getting away from, we have to increase the taxes. You have no choice because you can't meet the bills unless you do. And I understand that. But for me, it's a waste of money to rent a facility when the county already owns a facility that is plenty ample to hold. And if you want, go look on the thing. It says 600 and some odd people will fit in that building, and the chairs are there. And if they're not, you can get them from the Century Ridge building, you can get them from the Holder building. We have the chairs in Citrus County to put in that building. So if you're anticipating that many people, I mean, we've done concerts there for Parks and Recs, over 400 people at a concert, and it wasn't, you had plenty of space. So I really feel you should save my money, take the meeting on September 12th, because I anticipate there being a lot of people coming to that meeting. I've heard from a lot of my friends that do live in Pine Ridge, that they will be attending that meeting. So I can see an overabundance. There would not be enough for this plus that overflow room that we had when we did the water thing last, what's it, a year and a half ago. Thank you. I heard it.
Thank you, Janet. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Lito Capa. I want to apologize. I'm a disabled veteran, a TBI patient, Traumatic Brain injury, so my species don't...
Take all the time.
So apologies. So I'm here because it's about the issue of the moratorium on Inverness Village. I'm an owner of a property that needs to be built. And I, and I just, I just find out that there's a moratorium going on, and so all the construction are stopped as we speak. And we bought this house a year ago. So my building permit was approved a year ago, but since my lot and my property falls like in the middle of the construction, it took a few months until they actually get to that property. So a year already passed, a year and a couple of months. So now I'm paying another, for the mortgage on the house that I haven't been living in. And as I speak with this construction company, they tell me that if, until this moratorium is released or suspended, that they will not be able to construct the house. So my question is, if my construction permit was already approved a year ago, is not something that I'm actually requesting this year or two months ago or three months ago? Is there any way that you guys can help me out so I can construct my home? Because, right, like I said, right now, I'm going through to a financial hardship and everything, paying a couple of rents, paying for the house that is not constructed yet. And all I want to do is, you know, get the permission approval, whatever. And like I said, I'm not requesting a new permission. This is not about this year. This permit was already approved on July last year, 2022.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. Thank you.
We address everyone after everyone's done coming up, and then we'll address you. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ernesto Rubio, resident of Citrus County.
Tito, it's so good to see you.
It's good to see all of you too. I'm chair. And Commissioners, I'm here to talk about two things. Number one, I did have a chance to see the budget, and I did see that you did roll back the military for the county health department. And I understand the situation that the Commissioners are in, but what I ask staff is to please look at fully funding the county health department, increasing the, what dollars in revenues they're going to receive, because I, at the meeting, I saw that you were talking about the reserve. And I understand taking the money out of the reserves, but I want to make sure that Commissioners understand that the county health department is relying on those dollars. When you were talking about salary increases, the state of Florida already increased minimum wages to $15. The county health department has been there for two years now doing that, so there's a lot of difficulty. So please work with the county health department and ensuring the dollars that they're going to receive are at least equal to and cover the inflationary costs that we've had over the last year. The second thing I'd like to bring forward is I am a resident of Citrus County. I do use the county water, is where I reside has that county water, and I ask you to please, 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 start looking at fluoridating our water. Fluoridation has been a system that we see in public health that can improve the dental care of not only children, because we all realize that, but also of our aging population, of our 65 and older population who has receding gum lines and has exposure of more dental or enamel to that exposure for cavities and needs that even more than probably children do. So I ask you to see about when you can put that on your agenda and open a discussion with that. I understand that would probably be something that you want to do, maybe at a town hall or workshop, but I ask that you find time, sometime in your agenda and put that forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tito.
Terry Weber and Alice, Inverness Village Four, also Alice Weber. I just wanted to comment on that neighbor's comment about him already having a permit, but if I understood him correctly, the builder's not building his home. It was my understanding that you all are not issuing any more new building permits. So my concern is, I know the way that the situation was, we were lied to, myself and my husband, as well as other neighbors. If he's getting that information from the builder, how do we know that he's not being misled? If he has a permit already in place, his house should be being built. So I just don't understand that, and I'm just wondering if he's being misled by the builder. Another thing a neighbor wanted me to bring to your attention, which I don't know if you know, but the instructions on your website where it says you can send in an email if you can't attend the meeting, they were to be read at the meeting, you're no longer doing that. I don't know if you know that. For time constraints, you no longer read when somebody sends you in an email. And my neighbor has concerns because she sent you in an email, I think it was either your last meeting or the meeting before that concerning Ivy Four, and she didn't get a response. I'd also like to touch on the, what do you call it when we all get together and we have a talk about one specific topic? I forget.
Workshop.
Thank you. I think that would be important. A lot of people are snowbirds. When we first brought that up, we requested the workshop because the snowbirds were here and now they're gone. And there's a lot of Commissioners that don't know the background. I can guarantee you I would not have paid $80,000 or $100,000 for my small house on a third of an acre when I bought it. And it's not worth $80,000 or $100,000 more today. So there's a lot of background to it, and because of the sunshine law, we can't all talk. So a workshop would really be beneficial. Thank you.
I rent a hangar. My name is Ricky Rolls. I rent a hangar at Crystal River Airport. And in this hangar, there's 10 hangars, so it's 10 doors, two rams on it. And the rams failed. And when I took my ram to be fixed, it, all the seals in it crumbled. And the reason I'm up here is because the county makes us replace and fix those rams. And the problem is, those rams failed. Of the rams there, 70% of the rams have failed in a year and a half to two years. So they have reached their end of life, and yet the county rents these hangars and allow no maintenance on these things. A guy just rented a hangar for five months. He got ready to go on a trip. His hangar door wouldn't open because the ram failed. Five months, and he had to replace that. He lost his vacation because he couldn't get his plane out of the hangar. So that's the one thing is, you have a 70% failure rate of these hangars, and you're making us pay for it, for dry rotting. The second thing is, at the end of the year, the rent on that hangar went up 9.6%. Y'all voted for it to be for the CPI, and the county is using a CPI for a metropolis area. There's no county, let me rephrase it, there's no place in Florida other than a metropolis that went up 9.6% in one year. Okay? As far as in inflation or CPI. So when I asked about it, they said that it was using Tampa and St. Peter, which is a metropolis. And I've been to your meetings where you talked about, this is Citrus County. We're not Tampa, and we cannot, people like me, Mom and Pop, we cannot compete with prices at Tampa or St. Pete. So it went up 9%, 9.6%. And also, you allow them to charge on a new rental, not a new rental, when you renew, when you renew your rental, you have to pay an increase. And then at the end of the year, you still have to pay for the increase, for the CPI. So you could be paying as much as 14% to 15% increase in rental rate. Let's see, what else? And to repair these doors, Doc paid $2,000 to have both his rams replaced. Sorry, ran out of time. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ricky. Anyone further? Okay, we'll close, open to the public. Board with your agreement. What I would like to do is address everything but Inverness Villages Four, and then since that's on my agenda, we could actually do that quick update for everyone, and then they could go on their way rather than waiting around. Would that be okay with everyone? Because there's quite a few people from Inverness Villages Four. So Frank, I promised you an answer on this. So code, there are active code compliance cases. I sincerely hope someone from the Sheriff's Department is listening to this, just in case there's anything that Sheriff needs to get involved in. And we never heard anything about a pot farm. We never approved that. That never came before us. And I share your outrage. And this, and you also proved the point that whatever happens in this county that you don't agree with, it's our five's fault. But we never heard it, okay? So we're working on fixing it. Ricky, you're not the first one to bring this to my attention with fellow hangar lessees and pilots. So I have given the advice to the other pilots to go before the Aviation Advisory Board. They're there for a reason. They should, you can't address us from the audience. I'm sorry. You get one shot at the mics, but I'm going to tell you this. So work through the Aviation Advisory Board. They bring forward things for us to then sign off on, because I agree with you, if you're, you know, landlord, if you're renting something in a house and the toilet breaks, the landlord fixes it unless the person leasing the house is the one who screwed it up. So we have a problem with our hangar doors. I personally totally agree with that. Okay, Terry, we'll do that later. I think it was Javier. Tito, where did you go? Are you there? Okay. I think I made a mild objection to rolling them back without you guys here to make a presentation. I wish you, someone had been here to talk about what your needs are. So we got two more budget hearings. We'll see how it goes. And... And what was the crowd at Pine Ridge?
Pretty large. Yeah, I think the, you know, which I can talk, there's an agenda item for that, but the bigger issue is it's five, really five hundred and sixty dollars. You have to have staff there as well, the Sheriff's Office. So no matter where you would go, you'd have to have that. The other issue is the audio video equipment, which you don't have there. That's when we, when we take this.
I figured it had been thought out.
That's a bigger issue. We don't have that equipment there and that's the thing. And if someone asks to consider this, we tried to consider it in the past. So I'm bringing it forward just so somebody doesn't say, why didn't you think of it? When you have overflowing crowds and things like that. So that's what this is bringing forward.
And I'm going to yield the floor to whoever wants to go next, but in the meantime, would it be okay to get Eric to check on that gentleman's permit to make sure that he does have an active permit? He does? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Who wants to go next? Commissioner Canard?
I'll chime in. I'm just going to address the issue of moving the meeting. I know that's on our agenda. But that's not something I'm going to support at all. Quite frankly, I think the only reason that we should consider moving a meeting is when it's an item such as was addressed when Commissioner Bays was first here. Something that impacts the entire county. And you run the risk or run the, I don't want to say risk, you run the possibility of four, five, six hundred people showing up, then you need to be at the auditorium to talk about fire. Or you need to be at, at the college or, you know, a, a great suggestion out, out at the, out in Citrus Springs. But outside of that, you know, this room and the overflow room worked just fine for the Sugar Mill Woods discussion. That was, that was a very popular discussion for those homeowners. And so I think, I think we'll be perfectly capable right here of having that discussion on on Pine Ridge Golf Course and save the thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Finnegan?
I think you handled most everything. Again, Janet, I just wanted you to know that college, it was audio video and we have to spend money on the deputies no matter what. And I disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Canard. I'm sorry, but you know, we sit here for the people and if we have so many people, no matter what part of the county, if they're from everywhere in the county or a section of the county and maybe other people outside of the county want to talk about it. That's our sole purpose here and we need to accommodate everybody we can. And I know if Citrus Springs had the same situation and had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, you know, everyone would want to be accommodated and I, and I think we need to do that. And Tito, this is going to be fun, me and you. We've had this conversation and I have the utmost respect for you and I welcome the debate. You're going to say fluoride's so good and I'm going to say, I don't want to drink that poison in my water. I'll rather pass out toothbrushes. So I look forward to having more conversation with you about that.
Thank you. And you, you don't have anything? Okay. Mr. Landon, you're up.
I just wanted to say that I gathered that gentleman's information is permit and contact information. So I'll, I'll research that and get back with him as soon as possible.
Okay, but it is an active permit.
I don't know. I don't know. He had a couple of different permit numbers, so I'm going to do the research and find out what the story is.
The, the short answer, and you need to roll into doing your update for IV Four, but the short answer is if you do have a permit, there is nothing stopping your builder from building. So if you do have, if it turns out that you do have a permit to build your house, you need to contact an attorney. So.
IV Four, we go out every week, code enforcement. So there's rolling cases for trash and debris that they, that they work on, on a weekly basis. And there's also over twenty cases that I've either been to special master or being appealed as a result of the special master hearing or are awaiting special master. And those are for lot clearing and, and junk storage.
Okay. And the last we heard, we are going to, and this is a broader discussion. We are going to have final numbers for an MSBU on October tenth, I believe.
That's the goal.
And the good news is, is it went from thirty-three lots that have had, we, we had guesstimated thirty-three lots that would, were improved. So that would be, that's what ran the cost up so dramatically and we're down to seven and they, none of them have structures. I correct, I believe. So that's going to make the MSBU possibly actually normal and affordable. I've been working on this. I tried to tell you, Terry, I've been working on this. Guy give, give, government goes grindingly slow, but we, you just keep working on it. So and do you have anything further?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So to follow up on all your direct questions, no reply to email. Some of those I just, if they're just, sometimes I don't reply individually to every single email and I apologize for that. I, I just don't always get every single one. I try very hard. What, what you can do to try to spread the word on everyone, because I know these meetings are, are such a joy for everyone to sit through the whole time. But I have IV Four on my update at the end of the meeting, every single meeting. One of you can go to the video after the fact, scrub your finger along, find the timestamp when IV Four bring, comes up and you can forward a link to the video with a scroll to that time and that way any of your residents can find out what's going on. Mary Jensen, departure. This was, the MSBU was a team effort and it's not going to derail the progress that's being made. And I think that was everything I had. Anybody want to comment on IV Four? All right. Thank you, everyone. And now we're on to regular business.
Madam Chair, motion approved. Item E one, A through D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on item E one through D? Any board discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You did, did you say yes? I didn't hear you. E two.
Motion to approve E two. Second.
Any public comment on E two? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E three.
Motion to approve E three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E four.
Motion to approve E four. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Outstanding commission items.
Just a few updates. Staff has contacted the Department of Transportation, advised that the county staff will manage the project. The Halls River Road multi-purpose path, we're working with them on establishing a project funding agreement. Also, item number seven, we're being told to remove that. That's been established, the parameters, criteria for no awaken quiet zones. And lastly, Betts Farm update. There's been a couple of bidders involved in that. I'll be talking sometime this week with our consultant, our real estate consultant, to look at those details. And at that point, at some point, we'll bring it back to the board for consideration. And there's a couple of different offers on the table, but we'll get consideration after we vet those more thoroughly. So I hope to maybe bring those at the next board meeting to you, to your attention.
Okay. And this says no vote. I could swear in the past, we voted on this whenever there was a deletion or an addition, but
Yeah, I don't.
If we don't need a vote, we can just carry on.
Chair, the vote is for deletion. If you're just providing updates, there's no vote.
Okay, so we do need.
Number seven would be.
We need a vote to remove numbers, to accept and remove number seven. Yes?
Motion to remove number seven from the outstanding commissioners list.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? I will say that there's some names on there. Quincy retired quite a bit ago and Mary's brand new, but make sure that that, all that gets updated.
They're, they're working on that now as we speak. Actually, Quincy's still here, kind of somewhat in transition. So we have Todd, but there, we're working through all those to clean all that, that document up.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. G one.
This is just a discussion, a vote to relocate the Board of County Commissioners meeting on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three at one P M. to the College of Central Florida. There was discussion already and part of that was because of the equipment they would have there. The Sheriff's Office deputies would be required at either location. This building, this facility holds about two hundred and eighty-three people. There was some concerns with the last planning commission meeting that they had. I think the county attorney mate was present there and staff was too. It was challenging at that, at that time. We had a fire marshal and things like that. So this is just a precautionary measure, at least to bring this forward to this board for consideration.
Board?
I just want to clarify, because there is a price for deputies when they say thirteen hundred, but we would be paying that if we were here. Correct? I mean, they're just moving locations. So that's not like a real added cost.
We'd be there all day long is why. So you'd still have to have the cost of having deputies the whole time. We would do the whole meeting there is why you couldn't.
With the net differential.
Yeah, you'd have to do that. So that, that's, that's a cost to do that. But this is just for consideration. So you're aware, there was discussions on this in the past. People have asked me that. So I wanted to bring this to the board's attention for consideration.
So I would make a motion to, you're looking for a motion or you just want to?
Yeah, we need, we need approval to do that so we could change the, the date of the meeting. Plus, there's a budget transfer associated with it as well.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve G one and the reason being it, even if we had it here, it would be so packed, we would run into issues. There's, like Steve Howard said, there's fire marshal issues. There's parking issues. We are here for the people and it is already expected to be overloaded as was the first meeting at the La Canto Government Building. We cannot hold that many people here, not safely.
Commissioner, is that going to be G one, A and B?
Got to put my glasses on, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. G one, A and B. Thank you.
I would like to know what the net differential is for moving. You just, so part of that is the sheriffs that we would have to pay for here anyway.
Is there a second?
Um, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, you can't change, they, we have to have additional deputies to go there. We can't take the deputies from here because they have to continue to work the courthouse. We'd be there the whole day from one o'clock potentially.
So the total of thirteen hundred is?
Yes, that includes everything. Five sixty is for the college itself. The rest is seven hundred and fourteen dollars. I thought that originally too. I thought, well, they could leave, they, they can't because they're, they've got, they got to do their work here, the deputies that are already present.
Okay, so.
Commissioner, I, I, I don't know. I can, having sat through it, having sat through the Sugar Mill case here and the Pine Ridge case, I would say there was at least double the amount of people for Pine Ridge than there were for Sugar Mill Woods. It was, I, I don't think I've ever, even when I was in private practice, experienced the number of people come out for a land use case as was at the Pine Ridge hearing. I mean, it was, it was wild. I was carrying chairs to, to try to squeeze people in and the PDC members were getting very uncomfortable because we were having to have people sit so close to the PDC members. It, I've never, e- even when we had the, the stubout case from Sugar Mill at the fairgrounds, I don't even think there were as many people at the fairgrounds as there were for Pine Ridge. It was outrageous. It's crazy.
And the capacity of CF is what?
Last Veronica, but it's four hundred, four hundred.
Is that adequate?
We have two eighty-three here. So, I mean, I don't know.
But what showed up at PDC?
We had, we had fire inspector, we had a fire inspector because we were exceeding the limits upstairs. I think upstairs was, I think, I want to think they said that was seventy-two. And I could have that wrong, but downstairs was like two sixty-two downstairs and one sixty-six. And we were packed in downstairs and I don't know how many were up. So we even had people standing all along the corridor. So I don't even, I don't even know four hundred is. Eric, do you have any thoughts? Is four hundred even enough? I know it sounds crazy, but y'all, it was wild.
We are limited with, you know, other locations to, to do this with the equipment.
I know at the La Canto building, we were really close to having the, the fire marshals shut us down. And I think it was two sixty-six fat fit in the room downstairs, one sitting in the room, one sixty-six. I think there were another thirty-something in the room upstairs. So we were, and then both hallways were full. So we were well over three hundred people in the building for that case.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this matter? See, none? Board discussion? Anyone? Anyone? I happen to agree with Commissioner Finnegan that we have to make it easy for people to be able to address us. So I'm going to be supporting this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three, one. G two.
We got staff that'll come forward if we need to as well, but I know there's been some discussions about this topic and some citizens with some concerns, I think, about the haulers. I think not, not complying with the current, current agreements in place with what time they're starting, also some recycling issues and things like that. So I think this is just really a discussion point to talk about that. And I've had a discussion with Commissioner Canard concerning this topic as well. He may want to share a little bit about that. But if staff could come forward and say what we've done to date, I think there were some letters we were trying to send out to have conversation with all of the haulers with ensuring that they do comply with the current agreements that we have in place with them. Our certificates, I think what they call them.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Carlton Hall, interim public works director. So on, on the case of the haulers, we have an agreement or a certification for those haulers once a year. So the haulers come to the site, meet with the director. The vehicles are inspected, they're weighed so that they have as being certified the ability to just pull in, weigh once, dump and leave. As far as noise, the only thing we have is an ordinance. That ordinance is part of the packet that they're given on the times that they can pick up trash.
In the past, when we've had complaints from residents, the first thing I ask them is where are they and who are they? I've had two or three residents that actually volunteer them on Smith Street at five thirty A M. And this was a company. I immediately called the manager of that company. We discussed that there's a problem. They shouldn't do it. It's been January, I think, since the last time I've actually had a complaint where a customer, a resident is called and complained about a company. It's always taken care of right away. We had, we restarted doing the, the holler meetings. We've had a couple of those. We're going to have, try and have another one in September. Spring and fall, basically, we invite all the haulers, any questions, any problems. We go over safety and the cell, stuff like that.
Chair, for the record, may I please have his name?
Oh.
Sorry. Dan Sherlock, Director of Salad Waste.
And thank you, Mr. Sherlock. You guys do a fine job out there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The complaints that I was getting, what, what prompted this making it to the agenda was that some of the haulers are starting before their allowed time by the agreement, which all of them would love to start much earlier. But I think it's, is it six o'clock or something like that?
Six A M.
And there's reports of them being in communities at four thirty, at five o'clock. You know, the sooner they get started, the sooner they can finish up and not out in this insane heat. But six o'clock is in their agreement. Also, one hauler in particular, there's concerns about them charging their residents for recyclables, picking up recyclables and then not having a place to take them. They off the cuff say, well, looks like they're, they're contaminated and they've charged their customers for the recyclables, but now are just dumping it in the landfill. So they don't, they don't have to take it to a recyclable processing facility. And the third complaint that I heard was that those that are picking up yard waste are mixing that in with co-mingling it with the household waste, which I believe is a violation with D E P because the yard waste does not compact as much as what the household waste does. But it's naturally much less expensive for the hauler to throw it all in there together rather than running two trucks down that road. And, you know, what, whatever we're, whatever parameters we're going to set for these folks. And, you know, what, whatever we're, whatever parameters we're gonna set for these folks ne, needs to be abided by, by all of them. And if it's not happening, I do wanna have a discussion about, uh, what's involved in rescinding their, uh, their agreement. So if they're not gonna do business properly in the county, then they're not gonna do business at all in the county.
Well, as a certified hauler, there's a separate rate. They get a much better rate per ton for the garbage to be dumped. And if they're not certified, that rate is increased. Um, so we would have to look into the ways in which we could pull that certification based on those complaints if they're justified.
Okay. And is it, um, is it one verified complaint? Is there a process that they go through? Is it, I mean, what's, what's the process if there's one continued issue with it, with a particular hauler?
Well, so far we haven't had to face that.
Right.
But in the future, we could look at putting, uh, verbiage into that agreement or that certification that they sign that would allow us to pull that certification based on those parameters.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that there's a process put forward, uh, because it's, it sounds like, um, I'm sure they all push the envelope, but it sounds like there are a couple that are just blatantly ignoring the terms of the agreement. And if we're, if we're not going to enforce the, the agreement or the certification, then there's no reason to have it. Um, but if we are going to enforce it, then the, the, uh, the process for, uh, rescinding their certification should be very clear, um, whether it needs to be, you know, a, 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 a letter to them initially and then ultimately ending up in a, uh, that coming before the board to determine that it's time to rescind it. They can't seem to abide by, uh, what they've agreed to. So, yeah, I think that should be a written policy on how that gets carried out.
As long, are you done?
Yeah.
As long as we can verify the complaints, I'm good with three strikes. You come before us, you're out. But they have to be verified to make sure that they're not one hauler playing games to try to drive another hauler out of, out of the county.
And that could be the problem.
And paying for recycling is something that somebody's doing willingly. That's just wrong if they're co-mingling recycling. So.
Yeah, we're gonna have to figure out how we're going to find that means to substantiate those complaints, right?
Yep. Can I be sure? Are, are you done?
Madam Chair, one last, one last question, just based on what you said. Do we ask the, ask to see what their agreement is for taking recyclables to, uh, a processing facility? So really, all the haulers could do just that and not have to pay the expense of taking recyclables anywhere. Just take them right to our landfill and dump them in there. Um, boy, that's pulling the wool over a lot of people's eyes then.
I pay for it.
Um, and you have no idea if it's right to the landfill. Uh, my understanding is with one of the haulers, that's where it's all going. Uh, so maybe there needs to be something that we need, you know, the county wants to see some proof of if they're charging people to haul recyclables, that they are doing with those recyclables as they promised their customers they're doing.
Um, I, I have to get to Commissioner Finnegan, but I would, just while it's on my mind, it's pretty easy to go shop every hauler that operates in this county and have someone call to arraign, to check prices and services. And if they offer recycling, then we know that they're collecting recycling and getting paid for it. So then maybe we could catch them over at the landfill.
Well, you don't, it, you don't know, you know, they should have an agreement in place. I think there's only two, two processing facilities for recyclables, right? Is it Wa, Waste Pro has their own?
In Ocala.
And where's this, where's the other?
Tampa.
Okay.
And that's another company that has the waste management, as far as I know, runs out.
So all of them need to, if they're selling that recyclable pickup, all of them need to have some kind of an agreement with one of those two facilities, that that's where it's going, or at least show some proof that they're taking it to one of those facilities. You know, if they're, if they're in business for a year and don't have a receipt for dropping off the recyclables one time in a year, that yeah, every, every load was, uh, was contaminated by a pizza box or a quart of oil, so we just took it to the landfill, that, that just doesn't pass the smell test.
No, sir, it doesn't. So sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you for your patience.
That's okay. Uh, I agree with everything Commissioner Kennard's saying. I just have a comment about that and a question because you had, um, you both had said, you know, like maybe three strikes, you're out. But Carlton, you had said earlier they're just out of that, um, lower fee. So would they be out of the county, you're out, or just at a higher rate? Would be the one question. And the comment I wanted to make was, um, when I had my tour, and it was a great tour, Mr. Sherlock, and, um, and with Mary Jensen, I had told her, I know tons of people that will not recycle because it was widely known in Citrus County. You pay for it, but they just haul it to the landfill anyway. So why bother? You know, you're using more resources, cleaning, rinsing, um, paying, and it's not going anywhere. So that's widely known here. So I think us doing something about it would be helpful, but I don't know if someone could answer the question. Are they out, out, or are they just at a higher rate?
The certified rate is, is, it's basically your curbside pickup and stuff like that does a certified weight. Your roll-up trucks are a higher rate. Um, you have front loaders that pick up businesses.
Could you make sure to speak into the mic a little bit more?
You have certified weight where they're actually on the curbside pickup. You have a certified weight for a front loader likes picking up businesses. As far as recycling, and it's been a rumor many times that we've read on Facebook that the landfill does not recycle anything they drop off. That is one hundred percent false. Everything that gets dropped off in our recycling dumpsters goes to Ocala to the Murph. It's been under contract. It's been that way for years. On a rare occasion, let's say a truck broke and it's, it had hydraulic fluid, it filled the truck full of fluid, yes, we're gonna, they're not gonna recycle that. But that's once a year, twice maybe. It picked up twice a day. Um, certified weight is basically your truck comes in empty, it gets weighed. So when they come back day after day, it gets in and out in one trip. It's a lot faster.
I think my question was though, um, and yes, the landfill's doing a great job. I didn't mean to, uh, I think that there were rumors otherwise. It's just the haulers. Um, would we still allow them? Because we wouldn't want it to be, if it's just a higher rate, it's just the cost of doing business. Maybe paying the higher fee and still doing business and not dropping off recyclables if they're collecting. You know, we wouldn't wanna get in that situation where we really didn't help our consumers. We just made it a little more expensive for them to do that.
It's gonna be very hard to tell whether a curbside pickup was, had recycling dumped in that load with the trash. Um, as a consumer, if you're paying a company to do something and you see them dump that recycling in the trash, that would be a call for the company to say, what are you doing? I'm paying for this.
I think to Mr. Kennard, or Commissioner Kennard's point, if we looked and said, okay, you charge your customers recycling, yet they have no bills for hauling the recycling to, you said Tampa or maybe Ocala, did you say?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we penalize them and it got to that point where commissioners were like, we're, are, are we done doing business with them? Can they not? I guess that's what we need to decide. Are they out of the county? Attorney wants to say something?
Might I?
Yes.
Chapter eighty-two of the code, um, lays out all of this that y'all are all talking about. And, uh, in order to haul trash in Citrus County, you must be a certified hauler. Um, and that's chapter eighty-two dash one oh one. So the first step is if I wanna haul trash, I have to get a certification. Um, as part of that certification, I believe that there is a, a moral, uh, or a character type of, um, question in there, which would probably be the only place that we could have any authority over the contracts that the business has with their customers because we don't franchise hauling in the county. So basically it is a contract between the hauler and the customer. And if the hauler is telling the customer, we're gonna pick up, um, recyclables and then the contract in the hauler is not then abiding by its contract with its customer, it would be up to the customer to enforce that contract. However, we have a hearing process, which is all laid out in the code of how a hauler gets their certification revoked. It is considered a property right to have that certification. So there is a hearing and there has to be due process. It's all laid out already. We already have all of this, uh, in the code of how you go about suspending a hauler and revoking the certification. And there is a hearing. Um, it's been several years since we've had to have a hearing, um, but there was a hearing at one point, uh, for a, a hauler and, uh, the process worked. Uh, some people think it worked well. Some people think it didn't work so well, but there is a process. So, um, the specific question about co-mingling and not doing what the customer pays for, that really is, uh, between the customer and the hauler. Although I believe that there is a moral, I, I can't remember all of the criteria, but one of the criteria has something about moral fitness or something like that.
So the question, I think you answered.
Or they're lying or they're being immoral.
If they're not certified, if they go through the hearing and they're not certified, they can't haul trash in Citrus County.
Okay, correct. And I think that you might have some grounds under that moral issue if they're not holding up their end of the bargain.
Madam Chair? Yes, sir.
Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, the problem, the problem with the co-mingling and leaving that up to the consumer to make sure that, um, um, they're enforcing the contract with the hauler. And I understand that line of thought is that if DEP, um, takes issue with us co-mingling, um, yard waste with household waste in the landfill, they're not gonna cite any particular hauler. They're gonna cite the county, right?
Correct. And, and what happens if a load comes in and it has a la, a larger amount of yard waste in there? Our staff will row the, roll the load around. We will pick it out and we charge the hauler a relocation fee. Currently at ninety dollars an hour, hopefully to move to a hundred next month. Um, if it's multiple staff, multiple machines, it's multiplied, hour, two hours, whatever it takes. Um, and usually a phone call to the manager of that company and it's not a lot. Um, usually again, it's something that's a mechanical thing with a truck. It broke or the truck never got emptied the night before and a different driver came on and then they don't know that. And now they've got mixed. So we actually charge a company to relocate that and separate it.
Well, that, I'm glad to hear that. Um, how, when's, when was that last? Most recently, did we find somebody for doing that?
For yard waste specifically?
Yes.
Been a while. We do it mainly for tires and, and, and hazardous stuff that comes into a load like that.
Okay. Well, I think i, if nothing else, I think we need to put them on notice, um, that, um, that we are paying attention to these things. And again, you know, even with the recycling thing, you know, once, once any of us put our, 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 our garbage cans out by the road the night before or at six, seven o'clock in the morning, if it's household waste or recyclables, we're not gonna stand there and see if they're putting it into a, you know, a truck that's hauling recyclables only. We're trusting them to do that. And given, the only reason that I would suggest the government even get involved in this is that we are regulating them. We're, we're certifying them. We should be making sure that they are abiding by the terms of that certification. And if they're not, then we need, you know, we need to weed out those bad apples, uh, because they, that creates an unlevel playing field for all the haulers. You know, if I'm, if I'm picking up recyclables and yard waste and household waste and everything all together and taking it out here and dumping it for a low cost, um, I can lower my cost to all these customers. Whereas the people that are doing it right, as everybody's agreed to, their costs are naturally gonna be higher because they're gonna run additional trucks for the yard waste or hauling to Ocala or hauling to Tampa, the recyclables. Uh, if we're setting a standard, then I think they all need to be held to that standard.
I found it. I found it. It's, uh, the applicant may not be guilty of making misrepresentations in connection with their business. So it would certainly be a misrepresentation if you're promising to do the recycling. And then C is may not have defrauded the general public. So I think there, an argument can be made that they were defrauding the public if they, you know, say the pizza boxes are contaminated, but they're really not. So you have it in your code.
All right. And I would add from a marketing communication standpoint, if any of the trash haulers are listening, you might consider getting verification from the recycling centers that you can post on your website that you actually do what you say you're gonna do. Because if you're, you're not gonna pay to, to haul stuff down there and then not do it.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. We are now on, if there's no advisory board?
And ladies?
Mr. Howard, there's no, nothing on I?
Nothing. Nothing on I.
Committee reports? Any of my colleagues have committee reports the last couple of weeks? Okay. Um, I had an emergency villages for meeting with, um, three other government entities, which went very well last week. They were overjoyed to hear about the lower MSBU, um, particularly Swift Mud. And, um, all of those entities are still pursuing their own interest in the case. Um, so we'll all stay tuned for that. Commissioner Finnegan, do you have anything?
Just, you know, because I can't talk to you all any other time, just kicking something around. And maybe there's some history that I don't know about, maybe for Stephen and Denise. Um, we're shortly going to end this meeting. It potentially could have been shorter. Um, well, I don't mean this. Other meetings could be shorter, maybe not this one. But then we break and then we come back at five oh one. And then sometimes those are into the, into the night. Um, we do have scheduled things during the day. Is there any reason why we don't have our meeting and then move those type of things first? I, I wonder that, you know, people often bring attorneys or other professionals. I'm sure it costs a lot more money for after hours. But it seems like those are very important and take a lot of concentration. Could we not? You're smiling. Are you gonna tell me no? It, it seems like if they were on a schedule, at a scheduled time, we'd get them done and just proceed with our meeting.
You're, you're referring to the five oh ones?
Yes, ma'am.
Go right ahead.
Here we go.
Although it is not my job to always tell you, you can't do things, um, or what can't be done.
Despite all the evidence to the contrary?
State law requires that at least one of the public hearings be held after five oh one. Or fi, after five o'clock. So it's, they, they're scheduled for five oh one. So they usually have one hearing, um, you know, before the PDC and then that's during the day. And then their five oh one is after five. So it's state law, not county law. Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, don't give up that quickly.
Okay.
Commissioner Kennard, you're up next. So you could have fun with the attorney.
Given that the PDC is their first line of being able to either support or oppose something, it seems like after five o'clock would give more people the opportunity to attend that PDC meeting. So if we held the PDC meetings at five oh one, we could move our meetings to the first one, uh, at one o'clock, couldn't we?
I could add to that. And then the people that sit on the PDC, maybe different and more people would wanna apply if they have jobs during the day. Then if the PDC was in the evening, they could be part of that board.
Let me find the statute. I didn't know we were gonna be asked this question. So I just, I need to make sure, uh, I ha, I, I, I can get you an answer for that. Just give me a sec. Maybe after the next person speaks.
Is that, is that all you have?
That's all I got.
Commissioner Bates?
I love the idea. And I can tell you, I've looked at multiple counties. Maybe they, maybe their PDCs do them different, but they have either a different day. They, that they have, um, land use change hearings or they have them in the morning. I mean, they have them at different times. They're not after five. So I don't know how they're doing it, but they do it.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I didn't know you were skipping over me. I was still talking about the five oh one thing. I've got, I do have one issue that I wanted to bring up and just, just get the status of where we're at with our live stream contract.
We're doing really good.
That's good news. So when?
We are doing really good. Uh, I just, I just, uh, we had a conference call. I can't look this up and do this, but so it might be a little longer.
Maybe you can talk about it at five oh one.
There I go. Uh, so we had a conference call. Uh, the attorney for live stream made some edits. I got those back. I need to check on one question that he had. Um, and then there's another ni, annoyed thing that's gonna be up for y'all to decide. So I think it's probably gonna be on your next agenda.
Oh, very good. That's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got. That's all I got.
Excellent. And Commissioner Baze, you're done?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. So I, we already covered mine, which, by the way, Doug, is actually online. It says IV4. The printed copy? Yeah, online it said it, so. Yeah, it's not on the printed one, but anyway. So I have nothing further and I believe Madam Attorney, you're next. Do you have anything?
I, I have nothing.
Okay.
And if you want, I can have an answer for you. I'll send you all an email.
Okey dokey.
On the question of why we have to have the 501s at 5:01.
All right. So now we're going to do our second open to the public. Would anyone like to address the board? You get another three minutes.
I know, and I'm, I'm running out of time already. Okay, I did go to the advisory board.
Okay.
All right, I already put in for that. And the reason I'm doing these steps are that it seems like the only way I can get something done is to do it legally, so I will be doing it legally. But other stuff that I've had that we're doing, you issue, issue a price increase. You tell us that our rent is going up on December the 20th. You know, when you have to pay your rent a increase, January the 1st. You don't have any notice given to us when our rent's going up, none at all. And what I'm told is you're supposed to at least have 30 days or something like that. And you'll find that a lot of the people that pay rent to it are short because you give them a little notice to, to pay upfront. Let's see what else I didn't go over. And I did talk about the CPI, which is 9.6%, which is using St. Pete and Ta- Tampa area. And when I mentioned that these hangers, as far as the ram doors, I was told that our rent would go up if y'all have to fix the hangers. And we're in, in Citrus County, our, our rent is comparable to most of the rent in the bigger cities. For example, Dunellen is $330. I pay $416. Eight years ago, I paid $260. My rent has gone up by 62% in, in eight years. And with other numbers. Let's see, talk about that. I guess that's about it, but thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Whenever everybody's done, stick around because I'm going to ask staff to clarify some things for you when everybody's done.
Okay, thank you.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. I'm glad you clarified the fact that you need to get cameras and camera equipment, and that's the major reason that you can't go to that building. Maybe over time, you should take some money and get some cameras, camera equipment, so that you can have offsite meetings. Because that building is perfect for anything that you need that's large. Okay? Just the fact that, you know, we've got to pay $1,300 because it's got cameras or you've got to play the police. Well, I don't know. I don't see a policeman in this building or in this off, in this room. Okay? I know they're out by the front door.
They're watching us on TV.
They're watching us on TV. That's right.
Hi, guys.
But, but the thing is, if you've got that building, you could probably work some sort of deal with the sheriff. Because there are a maximum of five doors. And, you know, somehow you can figure out how many less officers you need. Because when there are meetings over at that building, there's usually only one officer. And I know they charge 60-some dollars an hour for when we have them for the parades and things like that. And I do know that they're extra above and beyond, and most of them are people that are on their time off when they do the parades and things. But I'm sure that somehow you could bring the price down if you were to have meetings at Citrus County buildings. And that's what I'm trying to get across. We need to use our already existing facilities for, you know, meetings that we need to have. And I don't know how much it would cost for the cameras, but I'm sure if you buy the, what you need and you use it over so many years, you know, it doesn't die the first time you use it, hopefully. So it's, it's a suggestion to look into in the future, you know? Maybe some of the reserve money could be used for it. Okay? I know we're not doing too well at getting the roads done out in Citrus Springs, but maybe if you actually came out there to a meeting, you'd see how bad the roads are. See that, you know, I've got plans here, you know? We've got to do something with the roads. And that's my pet peeve, you know? All the roads in Citrus County need to be redone. Not just Citrus Springs, but Pine Ridge has some really bad ones. I called a couple in today while I was on my way here. I mean, the pothole was this big and this deep. And you had to go around onto the other side of the road so that you didn't hit it. Now, the one I hit on, the one I called in last week, that one I've hit three times. And I'm telling you, it does not do wonders for the tires or the wheel alignment. And I know I'm not the only one that hits it because you can't get around it if there's another car coming. Thank you.
Stuck the landing, Janet.
Very simple. What's the word I'm looking for? Acknowledgement, I guess. No, that's not it anyways. Anyways, my question being, I'm under the impression, and just clarification, that's the word, I'm under the impression that the people that want to grow pot in Arrowhead never came before the planning board nor the commissioner. Just a simple yes or no. That's all I ever asked for.
We'll answer you when, whenever you're done.
Yep, yep, yep.
So. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none? We can only, I can only speak for the BOCC that we never heard it, but what about PDC?
I, I don't, is, is he saying that they never came before one of those two boards to ask permission to grow pot?
Yes.
Or is he asking if they came before the board for maybe some other reason, like a conditional use or something? Because I don't know the answer to that, whether they, they came for some other type of use. But I can say, I've never sat through a PDC meeting or a BOCC meeting where someone came to ask to grow pot.
Correct. That's my recollection. I think that would have stood out.
But I think he said something about a fence and maybe the permission to give a fence. I, I don't know.
And there are active code cases on that farm. So that, against county code, not against HOA, but against county code, they've done things that are not allowed. So. Janet, I'm sure Mr. Howard will look into that. And Ricky, I don't, I don't know you personally, so I apologize for using your first name, but I didn't absorb your last name, so. Hmm? Rawls or Rolls?
Rawls.
Rawls.
New Rawls.
Oh, yeah. One of my dad's best friends, the reason we moved here, was Captain Rawls from the US Navy. And in any event, I don't know if you know, I'm a pilot, so I'm intimately familiar with all of this. And I would say that if it's true that you got that short of a notice, that that's unacceptable. However, we had massive turnover at the county at the end of last year. We got not only a new board, but we got a new administrator, new other leadership. So we were in a bit of trying to keep up with stuff going on end of last year. So Mr. Howard, would you like to address this?
Yeah, I think what we're looking at, anything and everything, you know, best practices and things like that, customer service focused, all those things. So we'll have some discussions about that and follow it with staff. Obviously, that's not a, a good notice. We need better customer service than that, but we'll look at all that and make sure we make it better.
I will say behind closed doors, that's obviously between me and staff, that we can't be behind closed doors. All I've heard from Mr. Howard is a relentless focus on customer service for our residents. We do, what is our current waitlist for hangers at the two airports?
It's a lot. There's, there's a big waiting list, so.
So one of our major duties is a fiduciary duty to our citizens, to our taxpayers. And so we do have to pay, you know, we have to charge whatever the market will bear. And if we've got a long waitlist, rents are going to go up. That's just a fact of life. Hopefully, we'll get some more hangers built, which means that would, you know, decelerate the rent growth because we're going to have more inventory, which would be good. I do think, and I've heard this from multiple pilots, so unless other county, you know, unless we're the, you know, following best practices, like all the other counties are not maintaining hangar doors, then, I mean, that really seems unusual to me that we would lease property and then not maintain the, you know, the actuators for the hangar doors.
And I think this study that we're doing is going to incorporate not only the study, but there's other components that we're going to look at as well as we're looking at both airports.
Yeah. Stay tuned. We're getting our, we're really getting some stuff done here. So we have a new study coming out in January. We talked about that at length earlier today on economic valuation of our two airports. So take heart. I, I'm, I'm on it. I am. I think my fellow commissioners are as well. Would anyone like to address the, those who spoke? Commissioner Kennard, Commissioner Finnegan? Commissioner Baze is listening to this from the back, and so I guess she doesn't have anything to say. Anything else from staff?
Nothing further.
All right. Well, here she comes. Did you want to say anything? Okay, then we're all good. Upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting August 22nd here at 1:00 PM at, right here in this room. Another regular meeting, September 12th, 1:00 PM, also here.
That's going to, that one's going to actually change.
That one's going to go.
College.
That one's going to be at the College of Central Florida.
We'll, we'll update the address and everything for the public.
My apologies. Regular meeting, October 10th, 1:00 PM here in this room. We have a strategic planning status update. That is going to be at the La Canto Government Building, Room 166, on Tuesday, August 15th at 10:00 AM. There will be a tentative budget hearing Thursday, September 7th at 5:01 here in this room. Final budget hearing Tuesday, September 26th, 5:01 here in this room. And then finally, we have the Citrus Elected Leadership Summit, Tuesday, October 3rd at 9:00 AM. And that will be at With Lakouchi Technical College, 1201 West Main Street in Embarness, Florida. And at all of those meetings, there is open to the public except for the strategic planning status update and the Citrus Elected Leadership Summit, in which case the public can listen, but they will not be invited to speak. Anything further? We are in recess till 5:01. All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the 5:01. We are back in session. Maybe, maybe not. Commissioner Kennard?
Yes.
I know you're missing hearing in one ear, but I just brought us back into session.
Yes, I heard. Just ignored it.
Thank you for that. All right. We are looking at, what is this, T1? CPAAAPUD-23-03, Wilburn, representing Veer New RV Park. Take it away, staff.
Thank you. I need to start out by finding out if we've had any ex parte communications we need to disclose for the record, and we'll start with Commissioner Finnegan. No?
No.
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 Thank you. And at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, pending the Citrus County future land use map by re-designating approximately 45.6 acres from the low intensity coastal and lakes district, the low density residential district, and the general commercial district to the recreational vehicle park campground district, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And also, an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, pending the Citrus County land use atlas map by re-designing approximately 45.6 acres from the low intensity coastal and lakes district, the low density residential district, and the general commercial district to the recreational vehicle park campground district, and to establish a master plan for an RV park, providing for conflicts, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And I believe Dr. Wilburn is here for the applicant.
Ms. Katu, would it be possible to show the site plan? Good evening, commissioners. I will try to keep this short. My name is Michael Wilburn, Local Engineering, PO Box 938, Floral City, Florida. This is approximately 45.6 acres. As you can see, the majority of this site is left undeveloped. There is a JD line jurisdictional wetland that is shown on the plans that this park is kind of modeled, and the boundaries of that are kind of the boundaries that were utilized. We have shown on this plan a 35-foot setback off of that JD line, and that is all the way throughout this project. This is a, a great benefit for the area. This is a, a less dense, it's not increasing the density since it's transient, but more importantly, in the staff report, there is a little bit of background that's presented. I hope and trust that you guys have that in front of you. There's 66 total units on the north side of this existing parcel that's currently vacant that is also owned by the owner. This is a, a mobile home park that has a few RVs currently. All of that system is on a package plant that is currently on this property. And it's, it's self-contained. And so with this project, should you guys approve it, that entire mobile home park, as well as this park, will be tied into the central sewer that is available on Highway 19, which will eliminate completely that package plant. And keep in mind that currently that package plant is in close proximity to that wetland. And so it'll be a, it'll be a net benefit environmentally to the area as well as to the other project that is to the north and to the adjacent and receiving, receiving water bodies. This is a open basin. You'll notice that on the site plan, there's, and in the staff report, it makes mention to this, there's a, an existing canal that runs east to west, which you can kind of see on the property. It's kind of a dash line that, that actually leads out to the Gulf. So this is an open basin, 25-year storm event would be required from Southwest Water Management District. The ponds are shown, as you can see, throughout the property. That's because of the water table. And in addition to staying away from the wetland. This proposed plan in front of you has several different size RV spots. Some of them will be for smaller RVs, some of them will be for campers, some of them will be for larger. They all meet the 1,500 square feet, but they're not all 30 by 50, which is most of the time what you guys would see. Some of them are irregular, some of them could be larger or are larger. There is a clubhouse. There is a, a restroom facility. And like I said, there's, there's central water, there's central sewer. We have solid waste. We've already discussed the drainage. The RV density equates to about 2.1 units per acre. The project will be serviced through an access road that is existing and that we would have to improve from Highway 19. And it will be a shared access point to the neighbor to the north, the, the existing neighbor to the north. We don't have any objections to the staff report, to the recommendations on the staff report. There is, we did request a deviation from the PDC board when we met in front of them regarding a 15-foot setback, desiring to limit that instead of a 15 to a 10-foot setback on the north and south buffer. In the staff report, in the recommendations, the conditions of approval, should you guys approve, it, it is accepting of those 10 foot instead of 15. However, instead of a Type A, they have recommended a Type C. We would be in compliance with that. If you look at the site plan, you'll notice on the south and on the north, adjacent to the existing mobile home park, we're very close, we're only about 12 feet off the line, which is why we requested a 10-foot setback, or sorry, a 10-foot buffer instead of a 15-foot buffer. And as you'll notice in the staff report, that was amenable to them. The only other deviation that we are requesting is that we have, some of these sites are more than 300 feet away from the proposed bathhouse. The Land Development Code says that you have to have this facility within 300 feet. Many projects that you guys have seen previously, you guys have approved without bathhouses at all because a lot of these RVs are now self-contained. They have washer rooms, they have washer dryer. There's not a lot of people who are going to a public facility to do that. And so the developer of this parcel, who, who is behind me, they agreed to go ahead and they want to have a bathhouse restroom facility, wash facility. However, they only wanted one. And so I feel like they're going above and beyond the precedent that has been sent by so many projects previously. But because it's in the Land Development Code, we are requesting that the bathhouse be allowed to be more than the maximum 300 feet away from some of the units. And the units that it will be furthest away from are the very first- some of the units. And the units that it will be furthest away from are the very first units that you approach when you come into the park. They're also some of the largest units that we have. And so those will probably be bigger rigs that have their own self-contained, um, units for wash and for bath facilities. We meet the open space requirement. Uh, there'll be trails throughout this project. We have met with Southwest Water Management District, we have met with DEP, trying to um, establish a boardwalk through some of the wetland, um, which would again be another amenity to this, um, just to meander through. Uh, this project, as you can see, uh, the parcel's 45, almost 46 acres, but a significant chunk is wetland, and this project seeks to preserve that, as the staff report mentions. So overall, I think it's a great project for the area. I hope you guys do as well. And with that, um, there's no engineering concerns other than the entrance, which I've already mentioned. I would, uh, I would love to entertain any questions that you guys have or may have about this project.
Board? Mr. Kennard?
Just, just, uh, just to clarify, and in the, uh, staff report here, it has, uh, PDC recommendations. There were nine of them, and one of them was going to the 10-foot buffer, a type C buffer, and you're fine with all nine of them?
Correct.
Okay.
Got anything? Well, questions for Dr. Wilburn?
Dr. Wilburn, great presentation. I disagree with you on one thing.
Okay.
This is going to be good for the community.
Okay.
And here's why I say that. I went ahead and, um, asked the Sheriff's Office to poll the statistics on crime in that area, and certain crimes, you know, theft and things of that nature would normally, um, be, have a call for service, but I have the unique, uh, experience of the population that I used to work with. I know a lot of crimes don't get reported. A lot of domestic violence does not get reported. A lot of drug use and sales would not get reported if it's accepted in the community. Um, Homosassa is my district, and I want good things for Homosassa, and good things are coming. Before I even lived in Homosassa, but always lived in Citrus County, I knew of this area. Why? Because of the reputation that it has of terrible drug use, prostitution, domestic violence. There's a litany of crimes. I don't need to read all of them, and high crime rates. So, um, I don't want more of this. So I guess if I was going to ask a question, what has been done, or what do we see being done, if, uh, the board would want to approve this, like what changes? Because it would be great if this went away in our community, not adding more of it. We can't have more of this in, in Homosassa.
So I guess, I guess my first question would be, since I'm not aware of that, would be, um, is that specifically to a specific site project that's existing out there now, or is that in a general area?
That is Bellevilla.
Okay, the project to the north.
You could probably walk and ask any deputy, "Do you know about Bellevilla?"
Right, so-
Everyone would know.
It's good. I'm, I'm glad you brought this up. It's not part of this application, but we have met with staff early on with this, and, uh, the idea would be that this would be phase one. Phase two would be, um, a redevelopment of Bellevilla completely. Um, and so that's, it's not a part of this because there's two separate parcels. Um, this, this project, like I said, only has a shared access for probably 60 feet, and then it'll have its own gated entrance and going into the RV park. However, um, and, and the owners are behind me, we can, I can certainly bring them up, but that has been discussed, um, about a phase two.
I'm sorry.
And I believe there's, there's even a hotel structure there as well on Bellevilla. So, um, the optimum best use for that long-term for the client is not what is there now. Um, and so that's-
It seems like that's putting the cart before the horse, because if this was to be expanded, I don't see any half-million-dollar motorhomes rolling into that area. No one would want to stay there. It seems like if, if the owners had good intentions for Homosassa and good intentions for, uh, more development, that all of that would be cleaned up, and then it would be expanded. But in all these years, it's, it's almost like a nuisance area. So how, and we talk about our budget and, and how we're constrained, we add this. Now we need more law enforcement out there, maybe more trips to the hospital, more domestic violence services, uh, more court services. I have a lot of concerns about this project. I'm, I don't want more of what we have. And I, with just a promise, like, just give us this, let us expand, and we'll make it better. That, that doesn't work for me. Thank you.
I would say for me, the projects are too independent, but I did want to give you that benefit.
I agree with you that it seems like from a, and, and I don't know your business, I don't know your client's business, um, so I'm speaking outside my area of strength, and I certainly don't know your, your prior business with, working with, um, domestic violence. However, it does seem to me that it would make sense to get rid of the problem, because again, as Commissioner Finnegan said, the half-million-dollar, you know, RVs are not going to want to be next to. What I don't understand on the logic is how it's going to bring more crime. I don't understand where you're going with that, because I would think that that starts a gentrification process. But, you know, it, it's not my, your business is not my business, other than we need to either approve this or not. So I'm just reacting to what you said.
Can I respond?
Of course.
Because better things don't come. So you're, you're thinking RVs are nice, like new mobile homes. It, it wouldn't be. It would be the same very old, um, areas. You would just, you know, further pollute an area that attracts a certain type of client. That's, I mean, I know when we think new, we think, oh, it's going to be all new things. It's going to sit right behind this huge problem area and just create more problem areas. I don't see brand-new things coming in. I, I see very, very old things coming in, and that's the clientele that they attract. I, I just don't want more of it in Homosassa.
I see your point. Other of you have anything?
Come on, it's time.
No, uh, I think I'll wait and hear what staff has to say about this, but Commissioner Finnegan makes some valid points.
Okay, my turn?
Yep.
All right. So this is an application to change approximately 45.6 acres. And, um, this is an area of the site. You can see the Bellevilla Mobile Home Park that y'all just talked about. It's right adjacent to this site, and you can also see the big cleared area that is the septic mound. Um, removal of that, or that's the plant, whatever, I'm certainly not a sewer person, but it is a huge mound area, and I agree that, uh, removing that is definitely a good thing, although I'm, I'm definitely listening to discussion as well. So this is the existing land use. You've got some general commercial in the front, some middle is low-density residential. Most of that wetland is actually have a CL designation. You do see some industrial to the north. There's a mobile home park to the south, and also some residential lands to the south. So this is the site. Um, they did jump the gun a little bit on some of the tree clearing. Um, they did stop that once they were, were told to do so. So I'm, I don't think it's been cleared more than this at this time. And this is the site plan. I'm going to zoom in in just a moment, but you do see the, uh, constraints they have with the wetlands. They are preserving the wetlands, um, which did push them into a much smaller buffer. So this is a zoom in. You can see the 10-foot, it does say type A buffer between them and Bellevilla, and, and the, um, the south, south residential lots, that was a particular concern for staff. Um, they have agreed to do a 10-foot type C buffer in both of those areas. So this is the resident, the road coming in. Um, this is not the main entrance for Bellevilla. This is actually a side road. It doesn't appear to be used by Bellevilla, and this would be used by the applicant. Right here on the right is where they would turn into this new park if it's approved. And this is looking down the road. Um, it's not really a road. I hate to say that. It's a driveway. On the right side is the site under application, on the left side is part of the Bellevilla Park. So they are absolutely adjacent to each other. And this is zooming in on that buffer. This is looking at one of the streets in Bellevilla, um, from this site. This is what it looks like. Um, where this buffer would go would be right behind these lots. Um, these RVs you see on the left, um, on the picture, right behind them is that large, uh, plant, package plant thing that would disappear. And this is the site plan. So the PDC did discuss this in May 5th, uh, 2023. They did recommend approval, um, with the conditions as noted. They did discuss quite a bit the, uh, idea of the deviation for the bathhouse and recommended approval on that. Um, Dr. Wilburn is correct. That is, we're seeing that more and more with new RV sites. Um, central, central water and sewer are proposed.
Okay. Commissioners?
Well-
Sorry. Public?
I'm not going to make a motion yet. I'll wait till afterwards. I think the, the potential is, is there, uh, given the size of the property, um, to do a nice, um, uh, to do a nice project. Um, my concern is, um, it doesn't sound like their current budding project, um, has had the attention by anyone except law enforcement. And, um, yeah, I, um, I appreciate your comments. I, 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 I think you made, made a valid point there.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this matter?
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs. I've been coming to 501s a lot longer than most of you. I was taught, do they meet the codes for the building? And that's why they took it to the planning. And the planning seems to think that they did meet them. They just need your approval. That has nothing to do with crime. That has nothing to do with anything else. They are proposing a plan. They're proposing to put in sewer and water. And if you want to stop a plan because of, you know, possible crime, that doesn't meet the codes. And we used to have people at these meetings that were very, very emotional. And I know Commissioner Kennard was here when we've had them, and the people were told point-blank, emotions is not what it's about. This meeting is about, does it meet the codes? And if so, we were told that's why they were approving a plan. Okay? So before you start doing things, think, does it meet the codes? And it was approved by the PDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anyone else? Um, I would like to ask another question of Dr. Wilburn, if I may. Dr. Wilburn? Um, I am inclined to support this, um, but I would really love for you to get going on the other property as well. What are the market rates? Again, I'm not in the RV bus, RV park business. So I would think having a cleaned up next door in an expanded area would allow you to make more money per lot.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's in, it's in their best interest for the north.
Catering to a bad element in your RV park is only going to cause more, wreak more havoc. What amenities are you doing besides the bathhouse?
There's a clubhouse also. Uh, it's shown on the site plan. It's one of those two, it's the larger of the two rectangle buildings in between the two units. Um, it'll have a gathering area, ping pong pool, things like that that you would normally see in an indoor recreational facility. Um, and that's a separate building.
And how, how far out is, um, Bellevilla contemplated?
Uh, it would, it, don't know. Haven't, haven't got that far, but we did, um, we have gotten so far as to say that there would need to be a mass redesign of Bellevilla when this wastewater treatment plant, if you guys would approve, uh, is taken offline.
Mm-hmm.
And in the process of doing that, uh, would be the wise time to go in and make those changes to the infrastructure, to the layout, to a significant portion of the northern property, just because of where that line would need to go and how those units would need to hook up to it. And I think Ms. Ktu would probably support this statement. Um, there is a plan, and I think your staff report that talks about those units and what they were approved to be, and the site on the north Bellevilla is kind of like a hodgepodge, and that's, that's why it wouldn't be wise. And, um, it wouldn't be wise to utilize the existing layout to tie into the new sewer. Uh, you would, you would then at that point go ahead and do your redesign so that what you designed going into the new sewer, uh, is something that's going to be more permanent, and that would not be the existing layout. But that couldn't happen. Um, it wouldn't happen, um, unless we took that treatment plant offline.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, we're certainly, as we're growing and whatnot, I would think that a lot of these, um, more prime areas are going to gentrify, although Commissioner Finnegan brings up some really good points of concern. Yes, Commissioner Finnegan?
This, um, I'm, I'm not sure that it's, it's relevant. Um, however, I'm currently under contract with the same client for other, um, large vacant pieces of property in the area for development. And, and so I believe they're, they're heavily invested in wanting to, to do right by the county here in terms of even multifamily, low house, uh, low-income housing, things like the affordable housing that we need in other areas. Um, so it would be in their best interest to not leave the north property the way it is right now, especially for, uh, the rates that they're going to want after spending the money to develop this, should it be approved.
Thank you, Dr. Wilburn. Commissioner Finnegan?
Um, I just want to remind Ms. Barrick and our commissioners that it's not emotional, um, when someone's asking for a change for us to plan for smart growth. That's why they're here. They can't just move ahead with this. They want to make a change, and we are supposed to plan for smart growth. There's nothing emotional about that, just like we changed the code because there could have been on 491, all storage units, gas stations, and car washes, and nobody wanted that. So that's part of us planning for smart growth. This isn't it. And I appreciate if someone's wanting to further develop, Mr. Wilburn, but, um, if they're going to come up here and ask for things and changes, it would behoove them, they've had this for years, to, to fix the development they have. If they truly have a good investment in our community to make things look nice and us having smart growth, they would start with what they have and fix that and say, hey, look what a good partner I am. Let's move ahead to the next thing. But I am so adamant about this that I am going to, if it's the appropriate time with Madam Attorney, I'm going to make a motion to deny CPAAAPUD-23-03.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any board discussion?
I'll make a comment. I've said today regarding, uh, development on 491, and then also with the airport, I, I truly believe this, this is our moment in time that we have one chance to get this right. And we have to really start to vet these, um, applications as they're coming through, and we have to be very cognizant of how we move forward, because we don't want haphazard development. We want to see full projects. We want to see transportation nodes, how traffic is going to interject with a major highway, how we're going to, um, have setbacks and landscape requirements and signage. Uh, and I think it's truly very important. I really appreciate your comments on this. Um, and for that reason, I'm going to support your motion to deny.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, it sounds like, um, this one's not gonna, not gonna fly. Uh, I, I, I'm not opposed to these, um, these campgrounds, um, but this does not look like we're going to end up with a quality project here. Um, I appreciate, um, uh, Dr. Wilburn, the applicant bringing this forward, but, but I think Commissioner Finnegan made a, made a better case today for, um, they've got work to do first before it comes back to us.
Okay. Any other comments? Madam Attorney, are we ready to call the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. T2?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Comprehensive Plan by amending objectives and policies relating to Suncoast Parkway State Road 44 interchange management area in Chapter 10, future land use element, and by creating a new future land use category called State Road SR 44 Mixed Use 44 MU, providing for survivability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrubbing deserves, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. I believe staff has a presentation for you.
And this is a county consultant here for us, Wade Trim. And you've seen them before. This is the adoption hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Amanda Warner. I'm a planner with Wade Trim. I've been working with county staff for the last couple, actually year and a half on the State Road 44 IMA and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 22-10. I'm just going to provide a quick overview of how we got to where we are currently and then open it up for questions on this particular agenda item. So, so just to go over the background and the schedule for this project, how did we get here? You may recall in 2019, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council put together a study of the Suncoast Parkway 2 extension into Citrus County. That particular study proposed several different growth scenarios, of which the county selected the focused growth scenario. Moving forward from that point, in 2022, we started to look at a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to implement a State Road 44 IMA new category to address and implement that particular focused growth scenario for the, the study area. In addition to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, once this step is over, we'll be moving into the Land Development Code update. So this is the State Road 44 IMA area. As it currently exists, the boundary is shown in red on the screen. You can see it extends about a mile north and south of the State Road 44 interchange with the Suncoast Parkway extension. That area to the north, the Suncoast Parkway extension, isn't constructed yet to the north. It's just to the south currently. So in January 22, 2022, we started this project with a kickoff meeting and a driving tour of the State Road 44 IMA. And February through March 2022, we opened a project website and held a stakeholder focus group meeting. We also held a public workshop for that, this particular project. And then April through August 2022, we started to develop an outline and a draft Comprehensive Plan Amendment. In September through November 2022, we held several administration draft workshops. The first was with the Planning and Development Commission, then with you, the Board of County Commissioners, and then we had as needed consultation with stakeholders during that process. In January 2023, just this year, we developed a transmittal draft of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for public comment, posted that to the project website, and then held another stakeholder meeting in January. And that, and then from that point on, February through June, we, we finalized the transmittal draft and held a public hearing with the Planning and Development Commission. And then most recently on June 6th, we had our transmittal hearing with, with you, the Board of County Commissioners. And then in August 2023, where we are now, we're looking to request final adoption of that Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So this is a public hearing today for adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So just to review the objectives of this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, they're to promote compact and nonlinear pattern of development for the State Road 44 IMA area. It's also to promote mixed use residential and non-residential land uses, promote economic development opportunities. And then implementation is triggered by newly proposed or expanded development with specific thresholds. The proposed amendment before you acknowledges existing PUDs if they're already in place. And then it provides or establishes essentially permitted and prohibited uses for the State Road 44 IMA area. And it provides general guidelines for developments. So just to review the permitted and prohibited uses in the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, permitted uses would be light industrial, manufacturing, clean green technology, research, development, medical research and support, warehousing, logistics, residential, general commercial, hotel and travel accommodations, institutional uses that would include churches and schools, which are already out there on the corridor, and then government offices and facilities. The prohibited uses would be largely extractive uses, cement and asphalt batch plants, metal recycling junkyards, truck and vehicle repair, mini warehousing and self-storage, outdoor storage, and then low-density residential. When we refer to low-density residential, we're referring to less than six dwelling units per acre. So the general guidelines and policies that are included in the Comprehensive Plan Amendments are the minimum project size, which is five acres or three acres. And then we also have a provision for less than three acres if that particular project provides reduced impervious area and increased open space. The general guidelines also encourage a mix of uses. So it allows for non-residential mixed, either standalone or mixed with residential uses. Multifamily residential may be standalone or mixed with non-residential uses. And then other residential, other residential uses must be mixed with non-residential. So we're really encouraging non-residential uses on this corridor, supported by a little slightly higher density residential, such as multifamily. The residential density is a minimum of six dwelling units per acre, up to a maximum 20 dwelling units per acre, only if certain criteria are met. If you call on June 6th, there was discussion about eliminating some of the criteria in the list of criteria that were provided for the density bonus. Two of those criteria were removed and only one was kept. The criteria that was kept pertains to the inclusion of community facilities or amenities, essentially placemaking assets in those particular developments. But the provision that was added was that they be privately operated and maintained. So if those are included, there's a provision that they be privately operated and maintained. So that's the new criteria, just one listed there for getting that 20 dwelling units per acre bonus. The non-residential intensity in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is floor area ratio of 1.0. However, they can achieve a floor area ratio of 1.5 if residential mixed use is included as part of that project. So just going over the general guidelines and policies that are included, this is the latter half of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. There's discussion of the pattern of development, primarily economic activity in urban centers with mixed uses. There's flexible open space standards. Compact development is encouraged, such as bicycle or pedestrian oriented, and safe and efficient development patterns, placemaking, balance and mix of uses, diversity of housing types, allowing for a range of types and price levels to accommodate diverse ages and incomes, promoting an efficient circulation system. So safe, well-defined, encouraging transit, walking and bicycling, and then alternative frontage, reverse frontage road circulation patterns. Additionally, there's provisions in there for coordination with FDOT. This is State Road 44, so it's subject to permitting coordination with the Florida Department of Transportation. And then there's provisions in there for utilities, so encouraging new development to use central water and sewer. Gray and reused water is encouraged. And then buffering as well, so requirements for minimization of visual impacts. So these are the general guidelines and policies. And just to remind you, in a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, we're looking at the overall guiding principles and policies that you're putting in place. And then later down the road, we'll get to the Land Development Code, which will be the actual implementing standards that will go in, into the county's Land Development Code. Again, just to remind you, on June 6th, the, that density criteria going up to the 20 dwellings per acre was revised and is now just the one. So where we are now, so we did revise the draft, as mentioned, and we transmitted it on June 15th of this year to the state and applicable review agencies. We received four responses from those agencies. The Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, which is now Florida Commerce, had no comments. The Florida Department of Transportation stated there was no impact because of the policy 17.37.11 and policy 1737.13. Both of those policies pertain to coordination with FDOT. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection said no adverse impacts. And South Florida Water Management District said, or excuse me, Southwest Florida Water Management District said no adverse regional water resource related impacts. So those were the four responses we've received. There were no technical comments or objections provided by those agencies. Therefore, no changes are required. The county may adopt CPA 22-10 within 180 days. That's the, the clock that starts ticking from the date of their letter, which was July 14th. I looked at the calendar and that puts you at, at January 10th of 2024 is the deadline to adopt. Otherwise, you have to start again. So next steps, today we're proposing adoption of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-10. If the, if the county chooses to adopt this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, it will be sent back to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, now called Florida Commerce. And it will be considered effective 31 days after they determine that it is complete. So they'll send another letter saying that they've, saying whether or not they've determined it complete. And then with that, then we'll begin working on the Land Development Code updates to implement the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. That's really the standards where all of your regulations get put into code. And with that, I'm available to answer questions, as is county staff.
Something that I brought up the last time, and I was told, oh, it'll come back to you, so don't worry. And nothing's changed. So under permitted uses, there's travel centers with fuel. To me, that is not a gas station, that's a truck stop. I think truckers are our lifeblood of America. And we at some point could welcome those things in Citrus County. I don't think this is the right interchange for that. And it was, I believe Commissioner Kennard, it's your district, there was, when that interchange came in, I believe you were addressing issues with Crystal Oaks because, you know, there, it was confusion and traffic and near accidents. And I think if we would allow a nice stopping point for huge tractor trailers and trucks, I think it's going to be a nightmare in that location, especially with the Crystal Oaks community. Going down the line, maybe to the, the end of it in Citrus County, I could see us accommodating that. But I personally think that that should be taken out of this, or we're going to have, I think, some further issues with the communities that are there.
Commissioner Kennard? Um, Mr. Howard? As it stands right now, you had said that Gaston Hall had brought forward some concerns. Are these hashed out in here?
Let me see, let me have Joanna Neer come forward and talk about that. But he did bring something forward to staff to, to consider.
And I've spoken with Mr. Hall quite a bit over the past few weeks. He is not here, but I am sure he's watching and he'll have my head if I relay this incorrectly. What's proposed now meets the concerns he had, other than Land Development Code when that comes, he definitely has some discussions he wanted to do. I cannot speak for him. This was my, my understanding of our conversations, that they've met what they were, had concerns about. The one thing on the truck stops, if I can jump into that one, this is a comp plan. And I think when the land development comes, I don't think this is saying allowable uses. I think we can possibly make that, a truck stop may be okay here with a pud or something. Now, we completely can take it out. But this is a comp plan, is the over, overbearing one, the, the all encompassing. And we can talk about maybe pud, buy a pud only at LDC, or we can completely take it out. Hope that helps.
I think we should take it out. I think there'll be a different one of these for the other interchanges.
Absolutely. They're all so different, yes. Yeah. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, did that answer your question? I think we've met his concerns on this application, but he certainly reserves the right later down.
For the next time around.
For the Land Development Code with all the nuts and bolts, yes.
Yes. And I agree with Commissioner Finnegan that that, it would be of, I'm not really sure how that would work there. And it's probably better cited, but we also, if, as long as we could kill it at LDC level, then I would be maybe okay with letting it go at this level. The reason being is that I would need, want to know, you know, it's not like the Turnpike. They don't have center service plazas on Suncoast. They should, that would be great. Because it doesn't impact when they're not getting off Suncoast and coming into our neighborhoods to fuel up. Because I agree with you that the truckers are lifeblood of America and I don't want them to run out of fuel. So how far, you know, what's their range? What's the last, you know, how far apart? Because it would almost be worse to put them on the road to go down to the racetrack at 491 and 44 versus accommodate them through a pud somewhere. Whether it's on this interchange or the next one.
Right. So gas stations would be okay because we need to address that, but not truck stops themselves. And we can change that wording.
But, but what I'm saying is that, you know, our 18-wheelers are not coming into small gas stations easily or at all. So where do they get gas? So I, I'm open to going either way. I'm just having a conversation right now.
Right.
So do either of you want to weigh in? Commissioner Kennard?
I would take it out. I mean, I, I don't know that there's a pud that they could bring forward that would make it palatable to the folks in Crystal Oaks to be right at their back door.
True.
So at this point, I would take it out and we can deal with it further, further north possibly.
Okay. I'm good with that. Commissioner Bays?
I agree.
All right. Open to the public portion? Public comment? All right. Anybody in the audience like to speak? Going once, going twice? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Would anybody like to make a motion? Based on competent and substantial evidence?
Madam Chair, based on competent and substantial evidence, I'd make a motion that we approve CPA-22-10 with the, the single change that we discussed in permitted uses.
Second?
Does it need to be A and B?
Removing travel centers.
Removing travel centers, yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and we are adjourned.